Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, January 6, 2021, our first meeting of the year. My name is Jim Peck and I'm the Chair. Before we do the roll, I hate to do it, but I'm going to read the COVID statement. I know some of you have it memorized by heart, so if you want, you can read along with me. But I'm going to read it because I think it's necessary since this is a public hearing. The Plastow Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, is authorized to meet electronically, and these reasons shall be reflected in the minutes. Notice of this electronic meeting was sent to all, well, to all the public and published in the Eagle Tribune newspaper. The Plastow Planning Board is utilizing the GoToWebinar program or the GoToMeeting platform for the electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the GoToWebinar program, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting. A link to access this meeting was provided on the town's website with a notice word email with it also. Please report any issues to jcashell@plastow.com. There is a raise your hand feature of the program that will allow attendees to participate in the discussion. There is also a Q&amp;A box where the public can type questions during the meeting. The public can also send emails with questions or concerns prior to or during the meeting to jpeck206@plastow.com. Please note, all questions and concerns typed into the Q&amp;A box or sent via email will be read aloud to become part of the public record. The meeting will also be live on Plastow Access Cable, Channel 17, and will be live streaming on the town's website. Okay. Like I say every time, I hope that's the last time I read that. So I will ask Charlene to take the roll.
Jim Peck?
Here.
Tim Moore?
Here.
Lori Mallett?
Here.
Karen Robinson?
Here.
Francine Hart?
Here.
And Francine's remote.
Jeffrey Adams?
Here.
Greg Tallin?
Here.
John Cassell?
Here.
And is Tom excused?
Tom Alberti is excused. He sent me an email earlier today. He's got migraines, so this would not help his migraine.
It's supposed to get him till after the meeting.
Maybe. We'll see. We'll check everybody after the meeting. Okay, so the first order of business is review and approval of the previous minutes. Those would be December 2. We didn't have a second meeting in December, so hopefully everybody read those, and they were fairly short, so is there any adjustments or does anybody want to make a?
I'll make a motion to be approved, the December 2, 2020 Planning Board minutes.
Well, actually, no offense, but I think Francine is acting more. I'm not sure if you can make a motion. You're an alternate.
Okay, fine.
I guess you can. All right, we'll let you do it. Okay, anybody else? I mean, sorry, who wants the second?
I'll second it.
Okay, fine. Any discussion? If there being none, I call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, you need a roll call?
We need a roll call vote. I know it because somebody is remote. Go ahead.
Sorry.
No problem. Go ahead.
Jim Peck?
Yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lori Mallett?
Abstain. Because I wasn't at the meeting.
Karen Robinson?
Here.
Yes.
Yes. Francine Hart?
Yes.
Okay, that was it.
Okay, the motion passes 401, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, we have a public hearing, and the public hearing is to consider any additions, deletions, or modifications to the zoning ordinance warrant articles. I won't read all the different sections that are impacted. So I will open the hearing, and the way we will proceed is, we have nine warrants to consider. Now, we've pretty much, I don't want to say beat to death, but we've reviewed very much, put it that way. We reviewed seven of them quite extensively. There are two new ones here that we did not review, and we did discuss the fact that they would be on the public hearing, and everybody had agreed. The two are, if I'm not mistaken, number four, which is the definition for function hall, and number nine, which has to do with water resources. So those two, hopefully you guys had a chance to read them, and what I'd like to do, rather than talk about each one, I'd like to talk about them one by one. So rather than raise any points, maybe you could save it for...
Okay, on mine?
Yeah, we'll save it for that particular one.
Okay.
The other thing that we can do tonight is, what we'll do is, we will open up for comments from the public, and we have some members of the public here, for each one. We'll read it, we'll read it, and then we'll open it up for the members of the public to make comment. And then what we'll do is, we'll move to the board, and the board can discuss if we want to make any changes to that particular warrant. Once we have that one done, we'll move on to the next one. Now, I guess when we get done, do we need to vote again, John, each time we go through these, to move it forward? Or we already moved it forward? We already voted on that, right?
Yeah, we need to make a motion to post it to the warrant.
To post it to the warrant, okay, so...
And don't we put our recommendation on?
And changes, yeah.
Yeah, and we would vote to recommend, and that goes on, that goes on there. Now, notice also that, I don't think we had these last time. We had most of them, but we do have the voter's guide information. Now, we don't have to vote on that, but we can make changes, or suggested changes to that, right, Tim?
We can, but to save us from pulling our hair out, I would say, tonight, if we're ready to move the warrant, to post it to the warrant, that we also have approved the voter's guide language, so...
We might, as we discuss it, there might be someone suggest the change to the voter's guide, which we could make now, unless anybody objects.
Unless somebody has some kind of a major change.
Yeah, significant changes.
Yeah. The more we can get done without having to come back and revisit things.
Now, the good news... Sorry, Dean.
Just a moment, you have a couple individuals that went back there and stated public comments, so I don't know when you get to that point.
We're going to, if you're listening, if you're home and you're listening, will I be able to see them?
No, you won't see them, but I can unmute their mics.
Okay, well, don't do that yet. Just tell them that we're going to go through each of these one by one, and when I get done reading it, if they have a comment, I'll ask for comments.
They can use the raise your hand feature.
At that point, they'll use the raise your hand.
And then I'll put one.
Yeah. Okay, I think we got that squared away. All right, so let's go. The good news for me is that Tim's agreed to read some of these, too, so. And the way we kind of, we didn't throw a coin to decide. I basically said, "Tim, why don't you take the odd ones?" Because I saw there were nine, and so Tim gets to read five of them. So, Tim, if you can read the first one, once we get done reading that, I'll open up for comments from the public.
Okay. So, proposed Plastow zoning amendment Z21-1. I am in favor of amendment number one, as proposed by the Planning Board to the zoning ordinance Article II definitions as follows. Modify Section 220-2 definitions, definition D, personal service business, by adding the following language to the current language. And the new paragraph D reads, "Personal service business. A business enterprise which holds necessary state and local permits in accordance with New Hampshire RSA Title 30 to operate in establishment in which state-qualified practitioners provide individuals with such manual or mechanical types of treatment to external surfaces of the human body, such as barbering, cosmetology, aesthetics, electrology, body massage, and physical therapy." And this definition has been previously amended in 2001. And then delete all footnotes and footnote references, reference text, sorry, for personal service business in Section 220-28, Table 220-32. So previously, we had this information in a footnote, and now we're moving it to a part of the standard definition.
Okay, great. And we have voter information there below.
Oh, yeah, well, I should, I'll read that.
Yeah, read that, too.
As well. Yeah. The voter's guide information, in terms of explanation, just says, "This amendment provides a definition for an allowed land use, i.e. personal service business," as cited in the zoning ordinance, so really not...
The only other comment I would make is, this seems like somewhat of a housekeeping item.
Pretty much, yes.
And we have discussed it as a board. I don't think there's many, many issues. So, with that, I would open up to the public. We have two people, Dean, online?
Yes.
So we're talking about the first warrant. Hopefully, you're following along, if you have a copy at home, all you people watching at home, thousands of people, and the two people in the audience here. So if anybody has any comment, I'll open up for comments from the public. Okay, I didn't, I don't hear any, and I didn't expect to hear any. With that, I will turn it to the board and ask the board if the board has any further adjustments. Like I said before, we've discussed this three or four times. No offense, if you've got any changes, speak up, but if we don't, I'll entertain a motion.
Just a quick question. Is the underline five or six words, is that all that has changed, or is the entire paragraph new?
Well, I didn't read it because we don't really have the text displayed, but on the ballot, as we introduce the zoning amendments, will be the first two sentences there, saying, "Proposed deletions will be in bold, strike-through text, and the proposed additions will be in bold italic." So, and underline, that should say underline.
So my question was not about those two little lines, but in this actual paragraph D, "In accordance with NHRSA Title XXX, is that all that's been added to this definition?"
Yeah, that actually replaced.
That was the only change.
The amendment doesn't imply, the amendment just tries to explain what the amendment is, but it doesn't describe that it's just changing it to be in accordance with NHRSA Title number.
Yeah. Okay. We can add that to the voter's guide information?
Sure.
Good, thank you.
No, that's good, because we want to make sure people, when they read the voter's guide, it helps them.
Right.
Okay, any other changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to post it to the warrant, right, Tim?
Yep.
Is that the right term?
Post it to the warrant.
So I'll make a motion, we post amendment Z21-1 to the warrant for...
Motion made. I'll ask for a second.
Second.
Karen, second. Any further discussion on this one? If there being none, I call for a roll call vote. I got that. Charlene?
Ready?
See how sharp I am?
Jim Peck?
Yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lori Mallett?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Francine Hart?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes 500. We've moved one amendment forward. We have eight to go. And it's my turn. Okay, I'll read the next one. Proposed Plastow zoning amendment Z21-2. Are you in favor of amendment number two, as proposed by the Planning Board to the zoning ordinance Article III, general provisions by adding a new paragraph as follows, 220, 17.5, residential dumpsters. No dumpsters used for residential waste shall be placed closer than 10 feet to a sidewalk or bike path or edge of a street right of way, and must include screening between the dumpster and the sidewalk/bike path/street. A dumpster used on a temporary basis and associated with active onsite construction is exempt from this ordinance. Amendment number two is recommended by, well, we'll discuss that in a minute. The voter's guide goes on to the next page. The explanation is, this amendment as proposed is intended to provide a visual buffer between streets, sidewalks, or bike paths, and permanently placed dumpsters used for the collection of household refuse. So I'll open it up to the public, if anybody online or in Town Hall has any comments on this particular amendment. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay, there being none, I'll ask the board if the board has any further adjustments to this one. One thing I would note is that if somebody has such a dumpster, we just discussed this before, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim and John, but I believe that they're grandfathered, and unless there's some significant change to that particular dumpster, they wouldn't be required to do that.
That's correct.
Right, okay, thank you. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to post this to the warrant.
I'll make a motion, we post amendment Z21-2 to the warrant.
I got a motion. Anybody want a second?
I'll second it.
Seconds from Lori. Any discussion by the board? If there being none, I call for a roll call vote.
Jim Peck?
Yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lori Mallett?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Francine Hart?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes 500. And Tim is up. Go ahead, Tim.
Okay, the next one, amendment three. Are you in favor of amendment number three, as proposed by the Planning Board to the zoning ordinance Article V, establishment of districts and district regulations, as follows? Add the, in parentheses, C1-Danville Road Overlay District to Section 220-28, Paragraph A, and add the following use to Section 220-32B, Paragraph B, number 25, function hall. And the voter's guide information says, "This amendment corrects a housekeeping error by adding the C1-Danville Road Overlay District to the list of districts in Paragraph A. The overlay district was created in 2014 but was not included in the Paragraph A list. This amendment also adds a single use, i.e. function hall, to the list of permitted uses in Commercial 1 zoning district."
Could I just ask you a question, Tim?
Yeah.
My question is, what is the, I understand the first part, obviously, that was, that needs to be added, you know, C1-Danville Overlay District. The second part about the function hall, is there a particular driving force of this one? I know we discussed this before, but I just want to understand what this will do good for the town, adding this.
I think it was more of an oversight than anything else. I mean, we had, a number of years ago, well, it's quite a few years now, we had Sawyer's banquet hall. A lot of the, or several of the restaurants in town have sort of large function rooms. So the function hall use is around, has been around for a long time. This just kind of highlights that if you wanted to have a business which was just a function hall without...
As a use.
Yeah, just the use.
So you could be a restaurant and have a function hall used in that restaurant?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, this would only be for, really for standalone uses.
Okay, so I'll open up to the public. Anybody online or anybody in the audience? I see a hand. This is getting exciting. You want to come up to the mic here? Is that mic active? Okay. You have to move with it six feet of Dean. No offense to Dean, but we do this normally with Dean. It's nothing. Okay, so why don't you state your name and your address? Hopefully, you are from Plastow, and let us know what you want.
Thank you. My name is Jessica Dollard-Smith, and I live on 152 Plastow Road.
Hold on there. I want to make sure Charlene gets that. Did you get that? Charlene, did you get that?
Yes, sorry. I was listening to that.
Okay, so go ahead.
I am here to speak on the zoning amendment Z-21-4. I would like to ask the board...
This is, we're not talking Z21-3 right now.
Sorry, 3, you're right. I thought I heard you say 4 before, so I...
No, we're on 21-3.
This is in regards to the function hall, yeah.
You can comment on this one. It does, you know, it does have, they both have function hall in them, but 4 is more of the definition.
Okay.
So, you know, I'm not going to say you can't comment, so if you want to comment on that, comment on this, and you can come back and comment on the other one.
Okay. Okay. I would like to ask the board why, all of the sudden, there needs to be an amendment to include function hall in the Commercial 1 zoning district. My family has lived in Plastow for over 20 years, owned several commercial properties, and there has never been a need for this change. I can only suspect that this zoning amendment is being added as an afterthought because a new cigar and hookah lounge has opened at 148 Plastow Road, and under the current zoning and site plan, smoking is not allowed under RSA 155:64-77. However, if Commercial 1 were to be amended to include function hall as a permitted use, conveniently, this is one of the exempts allowing smoking under that same RSA. So I would really like to hear from the Planning Board why adding function hall to Commercial 1 is necessary, as Sawyer's function hall already exists in Commercial 1, and all that was needed was to go to the ZBA to get a variance.
I need to make sure we understand what you're saying. You're saying that we've never had this before, and you're suggesting it may be related to a specific location. You said it was 148 Plastow Road, which is Utopia?
Yes.
Okay. And you also said that by having a function hall, that they could then smoke in there?
Yes.
I guess I'm going to ask a question. I don't know, will that, will having a function hall change whether somebody can smoke or not? I just, I don't know. Do you know, Tim?
I don't know. It's an excellent point.
So, I mean...
The RSA is basically very, very broad, and it basically says, like, no smoking for any kind of business where there is public. So when I, the last time I read it, which was last night, I got the impression that this is a kibosh on anything, any kind of, whether it's a function hall, whether it's a restaurant, it doesn't not matter. If it's a commercial, it is banned, you cannot smoke. So I was very, very surprised that...
There is, there is an RSA, and that's the one you're referring to.
Correct.
Do you remember the number?
I didn't write it down either.
What she just read.
Oh, the 155. Sorry, I did.
Say that again.
RSA 155:64-77.
And that's the one, Greg, you're saying, it doesn't matter whether it's a function hall, it's a blanket.
And the other thing is, there is a House Bill 551, I'm not sure of the number, or should have wrote it down. There's a House Bill that changed a number of different types of tobacco-smoking devices to fall under the same category as vaping.
Like vaping, maybe?
So it said, like, no vaping, and this includes, and one of them is a hookah.
To clarify.
Correct.
Okay. So does that address your concern?
Yes.
I mean, you might have a separate concern, not related to this article, on that particular location and smoking. That would be a sep, we can't really deal with that. That's a separate issue.
Okay.
So, I mean, you would have to take that up with the town, you know, appropriately.
Okay.
You know, maybe the code enforcement officer, whatever you think appropriate. That's up to you. So relative to this, are you all set for this particular amendment?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you're not, don't say argh. Okay, we have another, we have another member of the public who I recognize. But you still have to say your name and your address.
Maxanne Dobson, 5 Nicholas Road. You might recognize me as Budget Committee Chair.
I do recognize you.
I just want to reiterate, that RSA that you're referencing, there is an exemption in that RSA that says smoking is allowed if a establishment is deemed a function hall or social club. That's further in the RSA that she listed.
Oh, well, that's good to know. I mean, that, a little contrary to what you...
Yeah, I didn't pick that up at all, so thank you.
That's why that RSA was listed.
It specifically said, can you read the part of, do you have it there?
Let me go on the...
Not to put you on the spot, but I did put you on the spot.
Hang on. Did you write, can you repeat the RSA she quoted in the minutes? You didn't write it down, okay. Could you tell me what it says?
I don't think so.
RSA...
155...
Yep. So that is the Indoor Smoking Act, which prohibits smoking at any establishment. But then it further says exemptions to the Indoor Smoking Act, where it lists function halls. I don't have the exact language in front of me because my internet's not working.
Okay, all right, now. Okay. Well, that's good for us to know, and, you know, we talk about this.
What does it say?
Does any of the members of the board have a comment on there?
I guess that, at this point, I would recommend we continue this to January 20th, so we have a chance to research then.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't see why not. It's a public hearing, we're continuing.
That's a good suggestion. I like that suggestion. As long as we can do that. We want to make sure we understand the law, obviously, before we do something here. Now, that doesn't mean that we wouldn't move this forward if we thought we wanted it to be a function hall, but what you're saying is, it could open the door for smoking in one of these establishments that are restaurants.
If you change the zoning amendment.
Can't currently, you're saying they can't currently do it.
According to the RSA, but if, if you were to change Commercial 1 to include function hall, that would be a different story.
I hear you.
As far as social clubs, function halls, any of those places could have smoking.
That's very important information, I think. Greg?
Can I just read this very, very short? This is the exemption. Enclosed places owned and operated by social, fraternal, or religious organizations, when private, let's see, not, when hosting private functions, purposes for which such place may be open to the general public may include, but not limited to, public meetings, voting, suppers, bingo, games, theatrical events, fairs, and bazaars. So I don't get this as a public function hall. I don't get that at all.
It says it's for private use.
Yeah, it's a private, it's a private use, exactly.
And you would have to be a social or, what was it, social...
Social, religious, or fraternal.
Fraternal.
If you're continuing it to the 20th, I can copy the exact, I went to the New Hampshire Health and Human Services site, where it lists everything that's exempt from the Smoking Act, and function halls was on that, so I can send you all of the feedback.
Yeah, this is the actual RSA. This is the actual RSA.
I understand that it was listed in that.
But it could be that, say, use, not to pick on that particular one, but say, any restaurant could, I guess, set up a religious or a social, but they wouldn't be able to invite the public, though. So it wouldn't be, it sounds like. But it's good, I'll take, you know, if everybody's okay with Tim's suggestion, why don't we table this? And if somebody wants to make a motion to table it, actually, let's wait until we hear any other public comment. I need to do that.
So I will email you as the chair...
I appreciate your input.
...the feedback.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments from the board, or I'll entertain a motion to table it, or if somebody wants to move forward, but I like Tim's suggestion, so at least Tim and I think we should table it.
I'd like to table it.
Table it, too.
Would I can make a motion?
I'll make a motion to table Z-21-3 until our next meeting.
Until our next meeting, which is what, January 20th, Tim?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the motion. A second, please?
I'll second it.
Second from Karen. Any discussion?
Yeah. I think we need to be, if you table it, then I don't think we can take it up at the next meeting, because it would, we'd have to re-advertise, because we're not, we're not telling the public when we're going to take it off the table. So I think the motion we want to make is to continue the public hearing.
Actually, I don't think we need a motion. Can I continue one, or should we have a motion?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I don't see why, I don't see why not.
Well, then I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
You withdraw your second, okay. Then I'll just continue this particular article to January 20th. Then we don't have to repost it.
Yeah, actually, may, should do Z3 and Z4. One's the use, one's the definition. We may as well do them as a pair.
So let's make it Z3 and Z4, because they're both wrapped up in the function hall definition. Anybody?
To January 20th. Got to make sure the date certain is in there.
Okay, that's my other question.
Say it again, Tim?
So you need to make sure the date is in there. So continue it to January 20th. So continue it to January 20th at 6:30.
Yeah, continue it to January 20th, put that in the minutes. So I'm just exercising my authority to do that.
Can I ask why Z3 and Z4 can't be together?
I think we were advised by the attorney to make an amendment.
Yeah, we were advised by the attorney. If you look back, if you look back to the minutes we just approved, we all said there should be a separate, we voted that it would be a separate one, so. So we'll continue those two. Which is great, because I don't have to read Z4 and it's your turn, Tim.
Okay. So, Z5. Are you in favor of amendment number five, as proposed by the planning board, to the zoning ordinance, Article 10, home occupation by adding the Village Center District (VC) to the list of zoning districts that permit certain land uses as follows. And the change is to modify Section 220-66, Paragraph D, permitted uses by expanding the permitted use districts from ICR or C2 zones to ICR, C2, or VC zones. And the second, next part of that is to modify Section 220-67, Paragraph E, conditions, by modifying the second sentence from current language, as signs will not be eliminated from within or by exterior spotlighting in the residential zones, ICR, MDR, LDR, to say, signs will not be eliminated from within or by exterior spotlighting in any zone, zoning district that permits a home occupation. And the voters guide information goes along with that. As proposed, this amendment will include the Village Center District (VC) as a district that allows home occupations by doctors, dentists, and other medical or mental health specialists. It will also make clear that signs for home occupations cannot be eliminated, no matter what zoning district they are located in.
Okay, so again, we've discussed this four times before. I'll open it to the public, anybody online, the people in town hall have left. So is there anybody out there that wants to speak? Did those two people, are they still on?
They are still with us, but they have not posed any questions.
Raise their hand.
Raised hands.
They're waiting.
Okay, so no comments on this one? Any further discussion by the board?
Simple question. Is, is this exclusive to doctors, dentists, and other medical or mental health specialists? Or does this village district allow other home occupations? The way the explanation makes it sound like it's exclusive just to those...
In the voter's guide you're talking about?
Correct. In the explanation.
I think there's more than those, Tim.
E2.
You may be right, because, I mean, home occupations can be anything.
Right.
It doesn't have to be just those, right?
No.
So should we maybe scratch that and just say home occupations, or?
Yep.
That would make it, that would make it simpler.
Scratch from by to specialist.
But is the Village Center District, is that different for home occupation? I don't know. Do you know, Tim?
Well, I think the gist of the change was that we were adding the Village Center District.
To the Village.
So you could have home occupations in the Village Center District.
Oh, okay.
And then so that, and then also this, same with the signage.
But Greg's question is, do you need to buy doctors, dentist, and other medical, or do you, maybe we should say buy doctors, dentist, other medical, and other types of home occupations? Or just leave out that clause?
Yeah, because it's just, it is just for home occupation and it doesn't really matter what it is.
Because if you just say it allows home occupations, that covers it. You don't have to say, I guess it's important that they understand what we're, that it includes doctors and dentists. It kind of helps them a little bit, I think.
Yeah, unless you want to define a home occupation, which I believe is already defined inside of...
It's already defined.
Right.
But if you're sitting in the voting booth, you don't...
Right.
So I'm kind of of the opinion that we say by doctors, dentist, and, not and, but, comma, other medical and mental health specialists, and, and other home occupations.
Yep. That's...
Do you follow that, Charlene?
Yeah.
I would think if we were going to do that, we would just, as a, put just a period after, as a district that allows home occupations, period.
Just say home occupation.
Rather than putting the list and then saying, and other home occupations.
Yep.
Say that again?
If the intent is to allow all home occupations, not just the ones that are in that list, I would think it would read better to just end the first sentence at the end of, as a district that allows home occupations, period.
Just end it right there. Okay. We were talking about that.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
I agree.
It is probably true, I hate to say it, but a lot of people don't understand, but it's in the definition, so caveat emptor, I guess. So we can make that change, that's, that's good. And that's just the voter's guide, that's not part of the warrant. So I'll entertain a war, I'm sorry, a motion to oppose the warrant as written to the ballot. Karen?
I second it.
So just say so moved.
Okay, so moved.
A second, please?
I'll second if nobody...
Okay, Tim seconds. Okay, any discussion on this one? There being none, I call for a vote, roll call, vote.
Jim Peck?
Yes.
Timothy Moore?
Yes.
Laurie Millet?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Francine Hart?
Yes.
Okay, it's my turn. The next one is propose, as in Z21-6. Are you in favor of amendment number six, as proposed by the planning board, to the zoning ordinance, Article 3, general provisions, motor vehicle and trailer sales, fee schedule as follows? Modify 220-16(c) from, as set forth, well, it's crossed out, but it's from, as set forth in the Plastow Planning Board fee schedule, to, as set forth in the fee schedule of the Department of Building Safety. And I think we all recall, you know, what's going on here. The explanation, this amendment, as proposed, shall provide deposit of collected municipal fees to the correct municipal department and associated fee schedule, i.e. from the planning board fee schedule, to that of the Department of Building Safety, which is the way it's done.
Correct.
So this is basically, I hate to say it, a no-brainer. So, but I will open it up to the public, because you never know. There's somebody out there, anybody, Dean, nobody. That's amazing. I was, I was expecting many on this one. But anyway, any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to move this one, or post this to the ballot.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Karen, and a second?
I'll second.
Second from Tim. Any further discussion? There being none, I call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. I'm sorry, roll call. It's force of habit, Francine.
This is a lot smaller.
Yes.
This committee.
Yeah.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, Jim Peck?
Yes.
Timothy Moore?
Yes.
Laurie Millet?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Francine Hart?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes 500. Okay, so we're now number seven.
Can I, can I just interrupt for a minute?
Yes, go ahead, Laurie.
Okay, so this one here, this is about the new C1 mixed-use overlay district. So if you go to the next page, we've now included function hall, number 24.
Yep.
So do you suppose we should continue this along with...
Could you hold that thought? I mean, I suppose you could talk about it, but I want it to open up to the public.
Okay, okay.
And that, no, that's fine. I mean, maybe we should do it now, but I don't think there's anybody from the public, so just let me ask Dean, does anybody have a comment on this? Okay, nobody has a comment, go ahead. So you're saying we probably remove that, or?
No, no, I didn't say remove it, but seeing we're holding off on function hall...
Definition, right.
Three and four.
Yeah.
This now, this new overlay district would include number 24, function hall.
Well, let me ask Karen, you came up with the C3, and there were reasons why you wanted the C3. What do you think?
This is the C1 overlay.
I'm sorry, C1 overlay.
But I mean, it's on, it's going to appear on both.
It sounds to me, I mean, it sounds to me like we should probably remove it, but what do you guys think? Is that what you think, Karen? Remove it from here?
It wasn't on mine.
It's not on...
I know it's not yours, but I'm asking whether you...
Yeah, no, I think it should be until you say something.
Do you think we should remove it, as we're suggesting, or not?
Well, remove it, or, you know, continue it until we get more clarification on function hall.
What exactly is it?
I mean, seeing we're bringing up three and four.
Okay. Greg?
The question that you asked Karen, I thought this was mostly our design.
No, this is not the one. I got it screwed up.
So mine's on the next one, C3.
Oh, okay. C3, this is the over, this is Tim's, actually.
Oh, this was Tim's, okay. And I was, I was asking was, if this is narrow anyways...
Maybe it's a question for Tim.
Do we want to remove function hall and then leave it as that?
What do you think, Tim?
Do you intuitively want, want function hall to be included?
Do you think we should defer, Tim?
Yeah, I think we should.
It's a shame that we would, I mean, but we could, we could always do it, then we'd have, we already have two for the next time.
Right.
Now, we may have other things on the agenda next time, so I don't want to back up too much of this, but...
Well, and that, then I would make a motion to remove it.
Yes. I'll second it.
We don't have clarif...
Let me hear what Tim has to say.
We don't have clarification.
I guess, I don't, wouldn't object necessarily to continuing it if that was the only...
Issue.
If that was the only issue. But I, I mean, I would like to at least read, read through it, so...
Yeah.
At the continued here, we could just kind of vote up and down on the function hall.
Yeah. Okay, so why don't we read it?
I would agree with that.
We'll read it and we'll see if there's anything further. If we come to the conclusion that's the only change, we'll continue it.
Yeah.
And then at least next time, we should be good to go.
Yeah.
Once we get clarification on the function hall. So guess what, Tim, you get this one, it's a long one, so it's yours.
Okay. So, Plastow zoning amendment Z21-7. Are you in favor of amendment number seven, as proposed by the planning board, to the zoning ordinance, Article 5, establishments of districts and district regulations, Section 220-28, establishment of districts, zoning map, by creating a new zoning district, C1 mixed-use overlay district? It says, as shown below, I would, well, let me hold that thought for a minute. So the first change would be to modify Section 220-28, Paragraph A, by adding a new district, C1 mixed-use overlay district, to the list of zoning districts. The second change would be to modify table 220-32, table 32, or I'm sorry, modify Section 220-32, table 32, by adding a new district to table 32 as follows. And it would be table 220-32L with the name C1OD in parentheses, dash C1 overlay district. And Paragraph A would read objectives and characteristics. This overlay district will be defined by its own geographic boundaries, provided that the boundaries do not fall outside of the existing commercial one boundaries. The district may be used for new construction or for redevelopment of existing C1 properties. The objectives of this overlay district are to enhance the utility of C1 properties that have access to municipal potable water and/or fire suppression water. Route 125 provides the primary access to C1 properties, and the town and New Hampshire Department of Transportation work together through a memorandum of understanding, in parentheses, MOU, when developers require access to their projects from Route 125. The overarching goal of the MOU is to restrict curb cuts along Route 125. This overlay district will follow the guidelines set forth in the MOU. An applicant may choose to utilize the provisions of this ordinance for submission of an allowed land use application within the subject C1 overlay district. However, when all, when said provisions are not included in such a submission, all of the existing C1 provisions shall apply, that is, all permitted land uses, dimensional setbacks, and required lot size, et cetera. When an applicant chooses to use this overlay district as the basis for development, the entire development must be located on a single lot. All internal roads in this overlay district shall be built to town specifications and shall be private roads maintained by the applicant, developer, or a management company. Paragraph B for uses. Paragraphs B1, B2, and B3 list permitted uses. However, there may be additional restriction on the size and relative position of one use to another as defined by the layout standards in Paragraph D. Paragraph B1, permitted uses by special exception, care and treatment of animals. And there's a footnote that gives an additional reference to the special exception. Paragraph B2, permitted uses by conditional use permit, none. Paragraph B3, permitted uses. Number one, retail business. Number two, wholesale business. Number three, personal service business. Number four, business office. Number five, professional office. Number six, bank. Number seven, restaurant. Number eight, funeral establishment. Number nine, private slash service club. Number 10, commercial recreation. Number 11, place of worship. Number 12, publishing. Number 13, vehicular brokerage office. Number 14, produce stand. Number 15, public use limited to public safety and service. Number 16, accessory use of structure. Number 17, storage of equipment slash vehicles used to service a product. Number 18, essential service. Number 19, small industry. Number 20, theaters. Number 21, nursing slash convalescent homes slash assisted living facilities. Number 22, hospital slash urgent care facilities. Number 23, trade business. And number 24, function hall. Paragraph C, areas and dimensions. Minimum lot size, 420,000 square feet. Minimum frontage, 150 feet. With a note, the frontage is to be measured along Route 125. Number three, minimum yard dimensions, that's not applicable in this case. Maximum lot coverage, 75%. Number five, maximum height, 45 feet or three stories, whichever is less. And those are also the same as C1, so we're not changing anything there. Number six is new, minimum setback, minimum building setback, 50 feet from all Class 4 and 5 roads, 20 feet from pavement edge of internal roads, and 10 feet from internal sidewalks. Number seven, commercial square footage, at least 70% of the total developed square footage must be commercial. Number eight, residential square footage, not to exceed 25% of the total developed square footage. Number nine, park and playground minimum square footage, 500 square feet per residential dwelling unit. Layout guidelines, Paragraph D. These guidelines are developed to integrate commercial and multifamily residential uses in a manner such that pedestrian and cyclist safety is emphasized while maintaining, maintaining a high quality of life. Each layout has...
I should read maintaining?
Maintaining, yeah. Each layout shown has its own objectives, and all submitted applications using this overlay district must meet some or all of these objectives. So at this point, there is only just that one, Paragraph D1 Plaza concept. So I would suggest we strike that sentence that says each, each layout shown, because there's only one that's shown, so I would scratch that second.
Scratch the full sentence, or? Scratch the full sentence, or?
The whole sentence, yeah. So, in the Plaza-
Karen, I didn't get that. What are we scratching?
You're saying in Paragraph D, scratch the last sentence, because there's only one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, good.
And the previous, the previous sentence before that, maintain should be maintaining.
Right, okay.
Okay.
So, Paragraph D1, then, Plaza concept, A, objectives. Number one, Plaza grouping of commercial properties located adjacent to multi-story, multifamily residential properties. Residential units may also be located above the commercial properties. Commercial properties may also be multi-story, maximum three-story, which was as before. Plaza has a one-way, 10-foot-wide street that is to be used for emergency vehicles and for postal or small package deliveries, with a 15-minute parking maximum.
Is that, is that right, 10 feet wide for an emergency vehicle?
For a one, for a one-way street? That's all, one lane, that's all you need.
One car, yeah.
Yeah, just seems narrow for a fire truck.
Yeah, 10 feet. Easily fit a car on that.
Keep going.
I mean, we can make it, there's nothing sacred necessarily about 10 feet, I mean, you can make it 12, but that's...
A car is only six or seven feet wide, so there's plenty of room.
Okay.
The lawn is one-way.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think, I think 10 feet is probably good. Number three, the Plaza is characterized by wide sidewalks that allow for restaurant slash pub patrons to eat or drink outside, and still have five feet of sidewalk remaining for pedestrian traffic. In a similar manner, retail stores may display their goods on sidewalks, like sidewalk sales and so forth. Number four, both the storefronts and residential buildings must have a common look or similar architecture. Number five, the Plaza portion of the property must be on, must be at least 40% of the property. Remaining portion of the lot may be used for standalone commercial and/or residential property. All internal roads on the lot, other than the Plaza one-way street, must have sidewalks and bike lanes. No single commercial space can exceed a 50-by-100-foot footprint, but it may be up to three stories high. Residential dwelling units must have a balance of studio apartments with a maximum of 700 square feet, one-bedroom apartments with a maximum of 900 square feet, and two-bedroom apartments, maximum 1,800 square feet. Then Paragraph B was a sample Plaza configuration. I'm recommending we strike that out of the ballot language and put it in the voter's guide.
So, we're striking B completely, because we don't really have one at this time?
Yeah. Yeah, it just, just would be too, too complicated to...
Yeah.
Get it, put it in the ballot. So, then, the voter's guide information. Addition of municipal water service along Route 125 corridor and within the C1 zoning overlay district will help to progress commercial development opportunities within said district, and thus help to expand the town's commercial tax base, and in doing so, help to reduce the residential tax burden for residents of Plasto.
Okay. And I think- Any public comments? Anybody have any?
I'd...
Okay, no public comments. Are there any comments from anyone here? That's an awful lot that was read, go ahead, Jeff.
What's the, what's the height of a single story?
What's the height of a single story?
Doesn't, doesn't-
There's no, there's no restriction, it's 45 feet in total, and you can have three stories, so just to do the math, it's 15 on average, but there's no restriction, right, Tim? Could you have 45-foot, one-story building?
I guess you could.
You could, under this writing. Under the way it's written, you could, this is just the same way as C1, right?
Five-foot building.
No difference. You can have a one-story up to 45, 45-foot, one-story building. Because it says you could, the restriction's only two, 40 feet, five feet high for any building, and three stories, maximum. So, you could have one, two, or three stories, and you could have up to 45 feet for whatever stories you decided on. So, you could even have a two-story building 45 feet.
What are you defining as a story, then?
Am I asking, answering your question, or am I confusing it?
You're confusing me. You're not answering it.
Well, your question-
What are you defining as a story?
Okay, then, go back to your question. Your question was, how high is one story? The answer is, there's no restriction, other than the 45 feet. That's it.
Okay, so this is...
That's the answer.
Yeah, I mean, we...
Is that right, Tim?
Yeah. I mean, I don't think anywhere in our zoning, we define the height of a story. Depends on...
Again, what are you defining a story as? So, what's three stories equal to?
Doesn't, you can do whatever you want.
Define three stories what it's equal to, it says the maximum you can have is 45 feet. So, you could have a three-story less than 45, if it made sense.
Architecturally, though, a story is a building. A story within a building has a floor and a ceiling.
Right. Right. Is that your question? What a story is?
In this particular case, a building could have one story and be up to a maximum 45 feet in height. That would allow for technically a warehouse distribution center.
The three-story restriction is irrelevant.
That's true.
So, it can be eliminated completely, because you're only restricting the height of the building, period.
Yeah.
How many floors are in there? Can be unlimited, or one?
Well, it could, can only be up to three.
Well, and it says, or less.
You could have, you could have four 10-foot, 10-foot stories.
So, are you suggesting an amendment to this?
You're, I'm not understanding what you're defining as a story. What is the purpose? You're only defining the height of the building.
Right.
So, what is the stories in there for?
To limit it to three separate levels, versus having four levels or five levels.
Could be levels, yeah.
Again, what's the height of a story equal to?
Doesn't-
Doesn't matter what it is. It doesn't matter, it doesn't have to be defined.
As long as it's not any more than three.
This is common sense question. What is the definition of a story?
I don't think we have a definition of a story. Do we have a definition of story, Tim, in the zoning?
I...
I don't think we do.
I think it's just taken, there's no definition, it's just taken that most people know what a story is.
Plus, it's in the building code.
Now, if you think we need a definition, that's another issue, but that's not this particular one.
So, you're saying you can't have four floors in that structure?
Correct. Three stories, um...
It says three floors, Jeff.
Yeah.
There's a restriction of three floors, right? Tim read it.
Where does it say three floors?
Number seven.
Number seven.
Number seven.
That's a story, that's what I'm asking. What's the definition of a story?
And I'm saying we don't have a definition of a story.
Just say floors.
So, if you're suggesting that we need a definition, that's a separate issue than this particular warrant. We would have a, add a definition to the zoning, which apparently we don't have. Is that correct?
I don't, I don't think so, because that, that sort of gets into the, to the architecture. I mean, typical story is a...
Floor to ceiling.
Floor and ceiling, exactly.
I mean, most people know what a story is, and I'm not sure what you're confused about.
But in, I mean, in a commercial building, I mean, you might have two, a two-story commercial development, and each story is roughly 20 feet high.
But it doesn't go higher than 45.
As long as the, as long as the height of the building doesn't go higher than 45.
Exactly. We could change the word to floors rather than stories, if that makes any sense.
So, if you want to make a change to this particular warrant, please point out where it is, which paragraph, which line, and we'll make that change.
Well, I don't know what the definition of a story is, so there's no, no height to it.
There is no definition in our zoning, I'm looking at it now.
I said that before, Jeff, we don't have a definition. If you want to add, you need to provide what you want to do. Do you want to amend this as written? Or do you want to have a separate definition for a story? Which one do you want?
You want to do both first. If you're using this as a parameter, three stories, what's the definition of a story?
Okay, again, I'm asking you, what specifically do you want to do to amend this particular warrant, or do you want to add a definition?
Define the, the definition of a story.
So, do you want to put the definition in this particular warrant, or do you want a separate definition?
Wherever you want to put it.
Right, I think, I think that at this point, we would say, we would clarify what we mean by three stories in the...
Adding it to the definitions would help, not only this particular item, but others as well.
Right.
So, I would suggest putting that definition, however you want to define it.
Well, we can do, well...
The main definitions.
I think we have a little quandary here, because we haven't publicized anything for the public hearing. To add another amendment at this point, can we do that, John?
Yeah, I'd just like to hopefully clarify the issue, because you obviously cannot have definitions within a zoning ordinance for everything.
Right.
And if there is no specific definition, then there's a caveat statement at the beginning of the zoning ordinance that you will find it in the building code, or you'll find it in the dictionary. But if we don't have a definition for any particular structural matter, you know, it reverts back to what is the common definition? What is an acceptable definition? And in this particular case, building inspectors, that, when they're issuing the building permit, that's their authority to determine what constitutes a story within a proposed build-
Since it's not defined, it's up to...
They have to deal with this all the time, with residential dwellings mostly.
It can't be more than three.
Because you'll have a walkout basement, you know, built into the side of a hill. Is that, is that a full story, is that a half story?
Right.
And then, when you get a peaked roof, a roof, right? Where you only have 50% of the building space in the peak, within the peak, being utilized for a floor and ceiling, you know, is that a half story, or is that a full story? Typically, it's a half story.
Yeah.
Right.
My question is, what's the maximum building height that can be done?
45 feet.
Okay, so that's what should be put in here, the maximum building height of 40 feet. How many stories inside the building is irrelevant?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could go that route.
If you look at Paragraph C, number five, maximum height, says 45 feet or three stories, whichever is less.
Right. So, why are we eliminating it?
Do you see that, Jeff?
Yep. Tim? Okay.
Are you all set with that, or?
Yeah, that's fine. How do you reference?
You see it there? C5?
I under, I see the definition for the maximum height.
Right.
But you're misusing the use of up to three stories, because there's no specific dimension for a story height.
No, there isn't. You're absolutely right, there isn't. Do you want one?
That's what I'm saying, you should clarify it.
Well, do you want to clarify how big each story should be? Is that what you want to do? I'm just trying to understand what you want to do.
No. If you follow what it is, just put the 45 feet over on, up to 45 feet, instead of three stories.
So, what do you?
In other words, it may be up to 45 feet high, which is the maximum that you have.
Can you please cite where you're talking? C5, is that where you're talking?
C5.
Okay, C5, what do you want to do?
Is 45 feet or three stories? Okay?
Yeah, what do you want to, what do you want to change that to?
Three stories is defined as 45 feet under that definition, number five.
You want to change that definition or not?
Go back over to number seven and put in up to 45 feet high.
Why do you have to do that? I've already specified it.
Because the three stories are defined as 45 feet on the other side, but not here. Three stories is vague. We'll put the 45 feet in if they want to do three stories, or two stories, or four stories, as long as it doesn't exceed 45 feet, which is determined over on number five, then you're good to go.
Okay, so you're recommending, let me just play it back and see if I got it right. You're saying on number seven, D1-7, you want to make a change to that at the end to say up to 45 feet, after the word "high"?
Yeah, or, no, up to, eliminate three stories and put 45 feet high.
Okay, so specifically, what do you want to, what do you want to do to that? Can you read exactly what you want in number seven?
But it may be up to 45 feet high.
No, we're, read the whole number seven.
Number seven, right?
Number seven, you want to have...
A single commercial space can exceed a 50-by-100-foot footprint, but it may be up to 45 feet high.
Okay, and you're, so you're going to change the last part, but it may be up to 45 feet high?
Correct.
As opposed to, it may be up to three stories high?
Right, because the 45 feet, they can put up-
I was just looking for your specific language.
Right, and I'm saying that it qualifies, they can put two stories in there, or three stories, or if they want to have very low ceilings, they could go four stories.
The specific wording change is, at the end, you're going to strike three stories high and replace it with 45 feet high.
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to understand it. Does anybody have a comment on that, Greg?
Stories are the total number of districts above earth floors a building has. If you refer to individual level, it starts at ground floor, then first floor, second floor, et cetera. The purpose of this having, using the term "stories" is that we are limiting the buildings to the number of levels that we want above the ground floor. So, to just simply remove this, we basically have, have created site plans and forced companies to limit the number of floors they had. The recent building that we approved for the storage building, using, taking this out, they could have said, well, we're going to have, you know, 10 floors of 5 feet, or 4 feet.
Yeah, that's what it does, Jeff.
I think this is a very, very distinctive reason why we want to have stories, because it defines the number of levels above the ground floor that we want to see as we're driving by.
Exactly.
I may be wrong, but that's just my impression.
So, you are saying you don't need to make that change?
I don't think you need to make that change.
Okay.
But I agree that you should at least put some definition.
What's the?
Maybe just using the nominal dictionary definition would be sufficient, but add that at a later point, put that in the definition.
The only problem with that is, that's a new zoning amendment, and can we do that at this point, Tim?
I, I...
You could do it, you could do it next year, I mean, you could do it after the...
Can you wait till next year, Jeff, or you want to try to do it this year? It doesn't seem like we can at this point.
I, yeah, I don't think we, we don't have-
You can't change, it's a simple change from three stories.
I'm not talking about your change here, I'm talking about, do you want a separate warrant article for a definition, as Greg is talking? I haven't talked about, we haven't confirmed whether to change this.
I don't want any separate things, I just want to have that three-story.
Because you're not concerned about the definition of story, you just want to make that one change.
All right, so...
Change you suggested, so he does it. We can wait on the definition.
Yeah.
Tim?
Yeah, so, for Paragraph 5, which reads now, 45 feet or three stories, whichever is less, we can put, we can add some qualifying language there for what a story is, which Greg just said. And then, on the following page, number seven, I would just end that at, at the 100-foot footprint.
Period.
Period, then scratch, because we know it has to conform to the height. Whatever height is defined in the areas and dimensions, this has to conform to. So, there's, there's no need to replicate that height definitions here.
Okay, so, just to play that back, Jeff, what he's saying is number...
Yeah, I know what he's saying, I understand.
Sorry?
I understand.
You all set with what he said?
That's fine.
Okay, so what is your, back on number five, you have to add a sentence or something?
Yeah, what about five?
What, define stories, you said? What do you do to number five there?
He's going to qualify it or quantify it or whatever.
Okay, well, we need some wording tonight.
So, the term, so the term "stories" under number five are three stories, and then in parentheses, you can put down number of district, a number of distinct above-earth floors a building has.
What?
And you effectively have defined it. So, number five would be maximum height, 45 feet, or three stories, and then in parentheses, you would put, you're amplifying or defining stories. You would say, number of distinct above-earth floors a building has.
There you go.
Okay, and then you would add a... Okay, and then you would add it with whichever is less. You wouldn't change, you would leave it whichever to...
Just leave it the way it is. Why do you want to alter it? Leave it, number five, the way it is.
I thought you did it as stories.
I think he was reacting to you saying you don't have a definition of story.
You didn't have a definition for stories.
That's why he was doing it. He was reacting to your concern that we don't have a definition.
Definition for stories.
He was just trying to react to that.
Yep.
He was giving you a definition now.
Sorry, Jeff.
It says 45 feet.
Okay, so we don't need that. Are you okay with not...
Or three stories.
We're not going to do anything to...
The 45 foot height gives it a maximum height, regardless of how many stories there are within the 45 feet.
Okay, so no change to number five?
No.
Okay, fine, let's go to number seven. And Tim suggested just putting a period after 100 foot footprint. Are you okay with that? Number seven.
Well, they were the same, to go with the same 45 foot height again, maximum.
Well, it's repetitive, it would be repetitive because you've already, you've already defined it.
Yep.
That's what Tim is saying, is that you've already defined the height, so you don't need to define it again.
Right.
You just put a period after the...
What's new in number seven is the 50 foot by 100 foot footprint. That's really what the new thing is.
That has to be in there.
Is everybody okay with that? Does anybody have any agenda with that?
As long as that's understood as being, the definition from the area dimensions are suitable to the Plaza concept, that's...
Yep.
The variable.
Okay, so we're just making the change to number seven to put a period after footprint.
Right.
Okay?
Good, Jeff.
So, so if we can move forward, is there any other comments? We'd had a couple of changes. I think, Charlene, you got those, right? And now we're back to the issue of Function Hall.
Right.
Yep.
We had a few changes, we know what they are. But Function Hall, now do we want to, now we know we only made a couple of changes, we're all okay with it. Why don't we continue it? Does anybody have any objection?
No.
And we, we're going to have something to do next time, come on. So, we now have three, and I will continue this.
Yeah.
I'll exercise my broad authority to continue it to the 20th. So, we'll continue this one to the 20th with those adjustments that we made.
Yeah.
The next time we look at it, we should have those adjustments. Go ahead, Tim.
Can I, please?
One big one, which I can't believe got dropped from the list of permitted uses, is multifamily residential. That was the, the whole purpose for the mixed-use district was to have commercial and residential. So, under B3, I would say, would, would list 24 multifamily residential, and then move Function Hall to number 25, and depending on if that gets bumped or not.
Multifamily housing, is that what you just said?
So, I would, after, after 23, trade business.
Yep.
Number 24 would be multifamily residential.
Okay, multifamily residential.
And then 25 would be Function Hall.
All right, so we're adding a function, number 24, and moving Function Hall to 25 for the time being. So, the next time we come, I assume if Dee is going to be putting this together, Tim or you, we make those adjustments and we will have those in front of us.
Yeah.
I still have one.
It's a multifamily...
We have another comment on this one. Go ahead, Karen.
No, not on this one, on mine, which you did mention.
Okay, well, I just want to finish up on this one. This one's been continued with those adjustments.
What's the definition of 24 again? Multifamily?
Multifamily residential.
Residential. And then Function Hall is now number 25 for the time being. Okay, so that one is continued, and we're going to move to the next one. It's my turn.
Did you have a question on that? Not on this one. Oh, okay.
Yeah, Karen has a comment on the next one.
Okay.
All right, we have two more. This is mine, it's pretty long, it's, we've discussed this quite extensively. I know Karen has some comments on it.
Yep.
Let me read it, unless somebody else wants to.
I can read it if you'd like.
You want to read it?
Sure.
You're the man.
Are you in favor, this is Z21-8, are you in favor of amendment number eight, as proposed by the Placel Planning Board to the Placel zoning ordinance, Article 5, Establishment of Districts and District Regulations, Section 220-28, establishment of districts, semi-colon, zoning map by creating a new zoning district, end quotes, C3-commercial, space, 3, close quotes, as shown below? And then there's a map and a comment that says, we're looking to get a clearer map.
Are we going to get a better map?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Modify section 220...
For the Den Life Publishing.
Okay, we'll have a better map. Okay, go ahead, Greg.
Modify section 220-28, Paragraph A, by adding, quote, "C3-commercial, space, 3", close quote, to the list of zoning districts. Modify section 220-32 by adding a new table, Table 220-32M, with the district regulations defined below. Table 220-32MC3-commercial3. Section A, objectives and characteristics, the purpose and intent of the Commercial 3 district is to limit the building size and to protect Placel's Village Center, schools, and neighborhoods from the overwhelming impact of increased traffic and congestion. Expanded traffic counts resulting from large-scale retail development in the designated Commercial 3 area to and from New Hampshire Route 125 via Main Street and other residential roads will threaten the character of the community and the general public safety and quality of life of Placel residents. Only businesses with reduced traffic volume will be permitted in the district. Section B, uses, permitted uses, 1, retail business, 2, wholesale business, 3, personal service business, 4, business office, 5, professional office, 6, bank, 7, restaurant, 8, funeral establishment, 9, commercial recreation, 10, private slash service club, 11, publishing, 12, vehicle brokerage office, 13, drive-through restaurants, 14, produce stands, 15, essential service, 16, theaters, 17, trade business, 18, small industry. Section C, area and dimensions, 1, minimum lot size, A, area 80,000 square feet, B, frontage 150 feet. 2, minimum yard dimensions, referred to Table 220-32I. 3, maximum lot coverage, 75%. 4, maximum height, 45 feet or three stories, whichever is less. 5, minimum building setback, 50 feet from the front property line. 6, maximum business size where a single business is to occupy a single building, 20,000 square feet, footnote 2. 7, maximum building size where multiple businesses are to occupy a single building, 60,000 square feet, footnote 3. Section D, further restrictions applicable to all buildings on a lot. 1, multiple buildings are permitted provided they are located in such a manner as to account for pedestrian safety as well as efficient and easy-to-follow traffic patterns. 2, total vehicle trips shall not exceed 3,000 vehicle trips per day per lot. Modify section 220-32, Table 220-32I, with the district setbacks defined below. Table, zoning districts, title, front setback, the opposite title. Under zoning district Commercial 3, front setback would be 50 feet. All use of land in C3 district, side and rear setbacks, second set of titles. Where any use in C3 abuts an industrial use, the side or rear setback is 35 feet. Where any land, any use of land in C3 abuts a residential use, 50 feet is a setback. Where any use of land in C3 abuts a commercial use, the setback is 35 feet. Modify section 220-3, one building per lot, Paragraph B, by adding C3 to the list of zoning districts that allow multiple buildings per lot if the planning board finds that the, that the placement of multiple buildings on a lot enhance the general health, safety, and welfare of the public. Amendment, okay.
Great.
And we do the voting guide?
Yeah, if you could read the voting guide information.
Okay, voting guide explanation for C21-8, the purpose of this amendment is to limit the building size and traffic impacts for development in the Commercial District along the northern portion of Route 125 from the intersection of Main Street and Route 125 to the Kingston Town Line in order to protect the town's character, public safety, and quality of life. The proposed C3 zoning district replaces the C1 district in the area north of the intersection of Main Street to the Kingston Town Line. Its boundaries are the same as the C1 boundaries.
Thank you very much, Greg.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And I will, before we go to the board, if we, I need to open it up to the public, Dee.
Uh, we have nobody.
Nobody, okay, so Karen, I, this is your baby, and you...
Yep.
I just want to commend Karen on, on doing a lot of work on this. And we have talked a lot about it, but Karen, you did a great job on this, I appreciate that. And Tim helped out.
Yes, he did, thank you, Tim.
Go ahead.
Okay. The thing that I am still questioning here, and since I saw it written on the other overlay one, on permitted uses, and I don't know how we want to do this, but 18, when I had small industry, I still think there is a chance that somebody might try to put in a contractor's yard. And I do, I want that not permitted, and that was my whole purpose on the industry one.
So, what you're suggesting is to remove number 18, small industry?
Well, you can remove it if you want to, totally, that would end the question. But I want something put in here as not permitted use.
Let me ask this, I believe a contractor's yard is not permitted currently in C1. Contractor's yard, that's my understanding, because I know there was a ruling recently on, I think it was 190 Placel Road, and the ruling by the code enforcement officer was that it was a contractor's yard, and therefore it was not a permitted use, and that the owner went to the ZBA, and they tried to get a variance. That has been continued to this week, I believe, on 190 Placel Road. But in that particular case, what would happen is it's not a permitted use. And even if you changed it to not be a permitted use, or you tried to stop it, what's happening in that particular case is the ZBA has the power to allow a, you know, that particular use by, by justifying it, that the ZBA can do that, is my understanding. And they may do that, I just think it's tomorrow night. So, I guess I'll throw it out to, you know, our experts, John and Tim. How can Karen accomplish what she wants to accomplish?
The most important part of this, a lot of businesses do a lot of storage of materials and vehicles.
They sure do.
But if they're in here for a site plan review, or with anybody for site plan or a special permit, it's really important to work into that review, the proper screening for the outside storage of materials, if it's going to be associated with the proposed use, and the same with vehicles. You know, a lot of companies today are storing all of their commercial vehicles on their properties, and it's something that planning boards don't necessarily think of when the applicant is before them, and the applicant would typically not even mention it. And then all of a sudden, you know, you have a fleet of, you know, 50 vehicles or 20 vehicles in the parking lot, which, you know, you're looking at the site plan thinking that's for customer parking or employee parking only, but not for this permanent fleet of vehicles parked. I see it happening more and more with sites, and, you know, it's not something that's intended, intended relative to the board's review. It may be intended on the part of the, the project proponent, but they don't bring that stuff up. So, you have to be really cognizant of what they're actually applying for.
Is there anything that we can do in this particular C3 district to avoid anything? Or you just, are you suggesting that as they come in, we just pay attention and make sure that that doesn't happen?
Yeah, you don't, you know, there's a perfect example out there right now.
It is.
That, you know, no one, no one could have anticipated something like that happening within a fenced-in area, within a neighborhood area. And, you know, no one would want that across the street from them or, you know, abutting their property. So, you really have to be cognizant of it. In this list of uses, it does not specify contractor's yard, therefore it is prohibited.
Okay, so it would be prohibited.
Your concern is, is totally valid because it's still allowing for an industrial use.
Right.
Industrial uses typically have a lot of outside storage. So, what I'm saying is if you want to leave that use in as a list, as a use in the list of uses, when you do deal with the site plan review, you just want to make sure if they're, if the use includes outside storage of vehicles and materials, that it's going to be properly screened, just as what we're doing with the dumpsters.
Well, we had, we had, when they came in, they came in to see us.
Small industry out there.
We had that preliminary discussion, and we did make those points with them, that we wanted that, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Not out in the open, so are you okay with that?
No, I still want to see small industry eliminated then.
So, do you want to make an amendment to your...
Yes, I do.
Okay.
If you look at the definition of small industry, the definition excludes what would be that kind of use?
Contractor lot, yard?
Yeah.
Small industry, a light industry involved in assembling components and/or parts, packaging which has its operations done, it says entirely in a building, not to exceed 10,000 square feet. Building size is inclusive of primary building and all necessary use buildings. Truck terminals, they do say, are specifically excluded.
Well, is it, isn't small industry on C1? Tim, it's allowed use.
It's all inside.
I think we just copied it over, so small industry is allowed in, in C1. And we just had a case where 190 Placel Road, the zoning code enforcement officer ruled that it was a contractor's yard, even though small industry was on a allowed use. He ruled that it was a contractor's yard, therefore not allowed. So, I would think he would still do that in this particular case.
Well, I'm just making sure because nothing is said specifically here, that's all I'm saying.
I know it's not said specifically, but it's not said specifically on C1, is my point. And with 190 Placel Road was moving into a C1, and it didn't say, it said small industry, didn't say contractor's yard, and he ruled it was a contractor's yard, they weren't allowed, so they had to go to the ZBA. So, I'm just suggesting that small industry doesn't open the door for a contractor's yard. If you want to remove it, I'm, you know...
She wants to remove it.
There's a number of other uses here that also could, could end up being a contractor's yard.
I don't think so, because I'm, my point is if the, if the, if the building inspector or the code enforcement guy looks at these uses, it, these were all in C1 in the case of 190.
I'm agreeing with you. I'm just saying that the use does not preclude someone trying to store stuff inside of the yard, which the code enforcement would say, okay, you can be, you can be a bank, but you can't have all these cars in the back of the lot.
What happened was, in that particular case, if you follow that...
Why can't I just say no contractor's yard?
They were moving to C1, all these uses were in C1, and he still ruled that it's a contractor's yard, you can't do it.
Right, you can't do it for any of these.
Any of these.
It's still, it's against the code. So, small industry, you can have a small industry, very clean and very useful.
Right.
I would, I would not want to eliminate that kind of business.
And you don't think I need to state just for sure, no contractor's yard permitted?
Yeah, well, no, if you want to add, if you want to add something additional to that, but that's against the code, so I think that would be enforced.
It already is not listed, so you can't have a contractor's yard, and you can't slip it in under any of these uses under our current code enforcement officer.
Okay.
John?
And again, I just want to emphasize, when we deal with site plans, you know, we have to flush out, they're going to have outside storage of materials or vehicles that may become an unsightly situation. And if that is the case, that they're properly screened. The whole idea is to properly screen. The whole idea is to properly screen. I don't, I don't think you really want to take out that particular use, because maybe a really good use, you know, good building and, you know, components being manufactured, high-tech components.
Yeah, nice small industry, we want that.
Yeah.
Well, as long as they don't have a contractor's yard with it.
Right, right.
That's all I want to be sure, that is said.
Okay, Karen, Lori?
What is on C one in our zoning is light industry, not small.
Yes.
We have light, we have, we have definitions for light, heavy, and small.
Right.
C one has light, not small.
Okay.
So if you want to make it the same as C one, it would be light, not small.
All right. Well, I know we had, if you go back in the minutes, we had a discussion about this, and we, we already went around and around on this. But I'm open to, Tim, go ahead.
Yeah, I would say we could consider this, under B, which is, says uses, we could add simple statements as contractor's yards are specifically prohibited from C three.
Can you do that? You can do that.
And then, then you have the permitted uses which follow.
Okay, that's, that's all I was asking, if I could do that.
Does that satisfy you?
If I could do that.
My only question on that is, contractor's yard is not here.
I would like a change to light.
It's already, but if you want to specify contractor's yard, it seems a little bit much, because it's not there. But if you put it there, it kind of, you know, nails it down. But that doesn't mean they can't go to the ZBA, they can still go to the ZBA.
That's true.
Okay, okay.
That, we can't do anything about that. Lori?
No, never mind, I'm all set.
So do we want to change this from small to light, or?
No.
No.
No, 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 no.
No.
I was about to ask Charlene to read the notes from when we discussed it.
No, no.
Don't want to go there again.
I would like the suggestion that Tim made, that would make me feel a lot better, and if I could do that, that's what I would have.
So what was the wording, Tim? Can you say that again?
All right, so under, the next sentence under uses.
Yeah.
Would say contractor's yards are specifically prohibited in the C three district.
Right under the B uses?
Yep, yep.
Okay, before the list is.
And then, right, then the next one would be permitted uses, and then all the.
Contractor's yard is specifically prohibited.
Yeah.
Boy, nobody likes contractor's yards. I don't know.
You've got all the C one to do it.
Okay, you okay, is everybody okay with that? Are you okay, Karen?
Yes, I'm okay with that, thank you, Tim.
So with that change, it's been read, do we want to?
Can I just say one more?
Okay, you got another one?
Yes, because now we, we're adding another, I wanted to be at the end, but now we're adding one that's another five pages long, is that true?
Well, let's finish this one.
Okay, okay.
So do we want a motion to, I'm sorry, Tim?
Yeah, I would suggest, kind of in light of what Karen just referenced, and we talked about earlier, in the, right in the first, first paragraph there, proposed Plastow zoning amendment.
Yep.
It says, the end of the last sentence that says, as shown below, I would suggest we end that sentence at commercial three, and then add the following. The full text of the ordinance is available in the planning department, on the town's website, and at the polls. And then that's all that would appear on the ballot.
Okay.
All the rest of the.
You're suggesting that not only for number nine, but number eight?
Yeah, and, and the.
Okay.
There'll be three of them that are very long.
The map would go away.
Well, you would avoid having a long ballot and people.
Yeah, exactly.
Having to go through, plus adding more paper going through the ballot box.
We'll, we'll still have the map, though, right?
Oh, yeah, the map.
Oh, yeah, everything, the change we just made, and, and everybody would have it to read, it's just not in the ballot.
Okay.
Well, will we?
The map has to still be in there.
Can we still have the map?
Yes, at, at the voting room?
Yeah, probably the map should be on the.
On the ballot?
Yeah, it should be.
Ballot.
Some people don't know where it is.
Okay, so you would have the proposed, and then the map, and then that's it?
Yeah.
Okay, and the rest of it, maybe you should put some words after the map, saying, just to clarify that, once they're down here, they're not at the beginning, they don't realize it's not here.
Right.
Just to say the same thing you just said, you know, reference.
Right, so the uses are still going to be listed, though?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what I'll, what I'll do for, or work with Dee and to do for.
Yeah, I think you understand, yeah.
For the twentieth.
Okay, with that.
I'll have one sheet, which is the language, just the language that's going to go on the ballot.
Yeah.
Not the voter's guide, you know, not, then I'll have a second sheet or file that has the, the full text of the zoning amendments that we've talked about, that would be at the poll, and you can't have voter's guide information on that. And then, finally, the voter's guide, which would have everything, the law language, the explanation.
So you're suggesting we continue this one, too? Or we can move this forward?
I don't, I don't think so. Unless there's more discussion about the content.
We can vote on it now, right?
I, I think so.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to post this to the ballot with the changes and what Tim just suggested. Everybody follow what Tim suggested?
I, I want it just the way it is.
Pardon?
I want it just the way it is.
She wants it on the ballot.
I want it on the ballot.
The, the whole text, all of the text?
This one page, two pages.
You want the whole thing on the ballot? You want all the, everything, not the way Tim said it?
Yeah, I think. Well, are you doing that for the overlay ones?
We're going to do it to number nine. We were trying to, you had made the point that we added five pages for number nine.
Right, yep.
He was taking it one step further and saying, put number eight, do the same thing.
No, I want it the same as.
You want it all on the ballot.
Yeah, I want it the same as you did for overlay.
So Karen's disagreeing with number eight, not number nine?
Yep.
Just number eight, leave all of it on the ballot, she's suggesting.
Right.
I'm okay with either way. I can see her point, leave it all on the ballot. It's not as long as number nine, certainly.
No, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to state, that nine was a little overly done. I was going to say, how do we do that?
This one is like two and a half pages, I guess.
Yes, it's two and a half. This one is eight pages.
Well, I mean, the overlay district is, that's got to be a couple of three pages.
I think that's just two and a half, too, I think.
One, two.
Not two and a half?
Well, I mean, I.
Two, three, four, five.
One, two.
We, we, we continued that, but I mean, I'd make the same recommendation, that we have just the.
Oh, I, I think that one's fine, too. I think you should leave that one in, too.
All right, so we have a disagreement. She, Karen believes that we want to show all of number eight. Tim is suggesting we do what he just said. How do people feel on that? Is it, do you, does everybody agree with me? Karen wants to put the whole number eight there.
Yes, I do.
Is, is, is what Tim's suggesting, just leaving the uses out, and putting everything else on the ballot? What part is Tim suggesting that we remove or leave out?
Well, Tim's suggestion was on number eight, not the changes to number eight. Those changes, I think, everybody agreed to.
Okay.
Tim's suggestion was to go further, and at the front of the zoning, to say that in number eight, all we would show was the warrant, the first part of the warrant, are you in favor?
Yeah.
With the map, and stop from there. The rest of it would be approved.
You wouldn't have the rest of it.
Oh, okay.
And Karen is objecting to that, saying, let's show it all in the ballot.
Right, exactly.
It's, it's two and a half pages, so if you cut it off, you're basically adding two more pages.
Yeah, but you have two and a half on your other one. Then do it on all of them.
And now, we have another comment from Francine.
Um, can I just make a point, that eventually people are going to have ballot fatigue? And we already have a number of warrants and zoning ordinances and school board stuff, and I'm honestly questioning whether people are going to read a two or three-page zoning ordinance. So you have to look at ballot fatigue, where people just get tired, and I, and we see it as selectmen, we watch people go through page two, page three, page four, and then they just throw up their hands, and either don't vote on it at all, or just fill out stuff without reading it. So you have to be aware of ballot fatigue. So I'm going to suggest, my personal feeling is, is I would like to go towards Tim's version of it, and, and if people are truly interested and they want to dig into it, they have the opportunity to do so.
Okay, so hold on a second. So just to clarify, Tim and Francine think we should do it as a summary in front, and Karen disagrees.
Why? Is it just mine?
No, no.
And do it for mine, do it for all of them.
No, it would be all of them, not just yours.
It would be the same for seven, eight, and nine.
I think what they're saying, they're not disagreeing with your warrant, everybody's agreeing with the warrant, everybody is going to recommend the warrant.
But the people aren't seeing it in one space.
It's just a point about ballot fatigue, and it's well taken, it's a good point. I don't know which way I fall, but let's hear John.
Yeah, you know, if, if these zoning ordinances were presented in a different form of government, so they're, they were part of the deliberative session, that would be one thing, where everybody would have the entire warrant before them, and they could do it.
Right.
But when you go.
It would be read and everything.
Yeah.
Well, theoretically, this hearing is that, that part.
That's right. This is, this is the hearing for betting out the language of, of this, this particular issue.
And now, the twentieth as well, yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, you, you will get an argument from town council relative to creating brevity of the language of all proposed zoning ordinances. The time to read through three or four pages of an entire zoning ordinance and to think that, you know, the average person is going to consume that much information and take the time for it in any type of manner that they're going to start deliberating with themselves before they vote on it. It's just, it's not going to happen, and as selectman Hart points out, they'll be burnt out, they will throw up their eyes. Nobody wants to be in the voting booth for a half hour.
Right.
You know, reading through stuff. It, it's just, people draw blanks. Most people go to vote just to look for names, all right, that's the person I'm voting for. They're not there to read a dictionary.
So I, I think what, what Karen's concerned about, if you don't show the full amount, will that impact them not voting for it?
Yeah.
I guess what you're suggesting is showing, not showing the full amount has no impact on whether they will vote for or against it.
Only, only because, you know, you have the public notice here.
Yeah.
The entirety of the language of the ordinances on the town's website, it will also be published in its entirety at the deliberative session as a handout.
Which nobody shows as a handout.
Yeah, and again, leading up to town meeting, right, it will be published that it's on the town website. The entirety of the language of all of these ordinances are on the town website. We encourage all residents to read them so that they fully understand what they're voting for on election day.
Okay, all right, Francine has a comment?
Um, yeah, just one last point. I think the most powerful support that we can show to the taxpayers is our vote of five zero zero in approving all of these ordinances. That is the most impactful thing that you can do, and we've seen that on the budget committee, we've also seen it on the select board. So as far as trying to read through all of these things, I honestly don't feel that it's productive, and as, as John pointed out, this information's going to be available to people who truly want to dig into it and understand it and learn from it, but that is not the majority of our taxpayers.
Yeah, what I want to try to do is placate Karen's fears that, that not showing the entire thing will have an impact. I tend to agree, Karen, with them. I don't think that people will vote against it. I think that, like Francine said, if we say five zero zero, that has the most impact.
Yeah, that's the selling point.
Okay.
Karen?
Then we'll go back to the overlay one, we're going to cut that one in half, too, right?
Yeah.
Okay, every single one is going to be treated the same.
Okay, so Tim.
Exactly.
Everything will end up being brief. It has to be.
Well, some of them are brief, let's not get carried away here, some of them are brief. Maybe the overlay is another one candidate, Tim.
It's another one that's two pages.
Could we do the overlay?
It has to be. No one's going to read it or understand it.
Can I make a suggestion?
Okay, go ahead.
Could we include where it has on it, A, objective and characteristic?
Yeah, I would like to have the objectives.
Could we include just that paragraph along with?
Yeah, sure, sure. That's just one more paragraph, that's not going to.
And the same, and the same thing on Tim's.
Yeah.
Yep.
On the C one overlay, we could include his.
All of them, so include the, the objectives and characteristics as well.
Yes.
Okay, you get that, Tim?
Would that be okay?
I.
That sounds like a very equitable solution to both issues.
It's kind of a compromise.
Yep.
Yes.
As long as Tim understands it, so he can write it up that way.
Okay.
Yeah.
You follow that, Tim?
And that's for both of them.
Okay, so it'd be three of them that would have that, everybody's agreed to that.
Okay.
But we need to vote on this one to move it forward.
The new one.
We talked about how it would be presented, but we need to vote on posting this to the warrant. So let's, let's have a motion.
I'll move.
Okay, thank you, Francine. Second, please?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lori. We all understand how it's going to be, and next time, Tim will have it in the format, unless Tim is confused here. Okay, so I'll call for a roll call vote. Charlene?
Jim Peck?
Yes.
Tim Moore?
Yes.
Lori Millet?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Francine Hart?
Yes.
Okay, so five zero zero, recommending it, this is going to.
I know.
Okay, Karen?
All right, the one more thing is, who and where do you find uses, for example, if somebody wanted to look that up? And where would you find the chart for frontage and all that if someone was interested in it?
Well, I think that's, that's a question for Tim. He mentioned where it would be, it would be on the town website, and where else? It would be, John mentioned, at deliberative session, we're going to hand out the full, full thing.
That's if you, if you attend deliberative session.
So people could theoretically get it there, it'll be in the voter's guide.
Once it's in the, once it's in the voter's guide.
Those are the three different ways they get it, right?
That's available for people to pick up at the town hall.
At the library or something like that? Okay.
And also, because the, I don't know how the RSAs are worded exactly, but you have to have the full text available at the poll. So the, the bulk of the text would be in a separate sheet, we make, I think, twenty-five or thirty copies is all you need. So if you wanted to look at it when you're at the poll, you have a copy.
Yeah.
When you're done voting, then you turn the copy back in. Now, the wrinkle that could come up because of all this COVID nonsense.
Right. That's how you get them.
So Dean and I talked about that a little bit this afternoon and we sort of decided that if we put the paper copies each in a plastic sleeve.
Yeah.
And then, so the people get the text in plastic sleeves. When they turn it back in, then the plastic could be disinfected in between voters.
Okay. Now, what happens if we do not have, let's say the virus does get really bad and there's fewer people now going out at all? I mean, they can get absentee ballots still, right?
But they have access.
So how do they get the information though?
They can get it online or they can get it from town hall.
Okay, so they will have it available. Could you have it available at the library too?
It sounded like we had four different avenues to get it.
The voter's guide would be on the website.
Be on the website.
And that's if everybody uses the website.
Let me finish.
There are people that don't.
The voter's guide would be on the website. It'd also be printed and put in the town hall, the library.
The library, that would be great.
Right.
Okay.
So it will be available.
At some point, you can't really hand deliver them. I mean, you have to provide them.
No, I know you can't do that.
It sounds like we have ample opportunity.
Okay. Yep, well, that's fine.
Okay. All right, well, we voted on that one, so we have one more.
Are we ready?
And number nine, and it's your turn, Tim. And it's quite extensive here, so let's bear with Tim. This is one that we didn't discuss before. And, you know, it just happened that we didn't have a meeting in December, so we said Tim would send it out. Hopefully, everybody did get it, I think, a while back. So I know how things are. It goes in your email. But here it is, and I think it's going to be a good idea to read through it. And so we'll just sit back and, Tim, if you get tired halfway through, Greg is right there.
Okay. So, yeah, so I guess it was advertised in the public hearing, so I'll read through and then, depending on what happens with it, we might have less to do next meeting. So the proposed Plastow Zoning Ordinance Amendment, Z21-9. Are you in favor of amendment? In favor of amendment? That should be number nine, not number X. As proposed by the Plastow Planning Board to the zoning ordinance, Article II, Definitions, by deleting definitions for groundwater, poorly drained soils, surface water, and very poorly drained soils, all of which will be moved to Article IV, Definitions, and to modify Article IV, Wetlands, by modifying the Article IV title from Wetlands to Natural Resource Protection and by replacing Sections 220.18 through 220.26 of the existing Article IV with the text below.
Let me just stop you there for a second. What's the driving force for using that title as opposed to Wetlands?
Yeah. So if you look at the Wetlands Ordinance from Exeter, which I thought, we looked at a couple, and I'll just pass this around. I just have the one hard copy. They, in their natural resource protection, they had.
I've seen it.
Single ordinance and sort of, the first part was Wetlands, which we're looking at tonight. The next section was aquifer protection, then floodplain. Don't recall if stormwater was in there or not. But all of the shoreline protection, all of the things that were dealing with natural resource protection were in this one article, as opposed to ours are scattered out throughout our ordinance. So I kind of like that organization and hence the title change.
So basically clicks everything in one place?
Yeah. So we're only, this year, obviously, just dealing with the Wetlands. Next year, you know, we could talk about integrating the other.
Now, did the Conservation Commission look at this at all?
They did, yeah. That was their.
Been for a year.
That was their recommendation.
Okay.
To do this. So the first, 220-18, Wetlands Conservation District. We define a wetlands district in our current ordinance. It's very close to what is in Exeter. Exeter has a few more RSA references, which is always good. So the first paragraph, there were 220-18.1, Purpose and Intent, says, "By the authority granted in New Hampshire, RSA 674:16 to 17 and RSA 674:20 to 21, the Wetlands Conservation District is hereby enacted to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community by promoting the most appropriate use of land and the protection of wetland ecosystems and water quality in accordance with the Plastow Master Plan. It is intended that this article shall," to the next page, "A, be implemented as an overlay district. That is, all of the regulations slash restrictions of the underlying zoning district remain in place, but the overlay district will impose additional regulations slash restrictions as described in the following paragraphs. Paragraph B, prevent the development of structures and land uses on wetlands and wetland areas of very poorly drained soils, poorly drained soils and/or their buffers that will contribute to the pollution of surface and groundwater by sewage or toxic substances, excess nutrients, or sedimentation. Paragraph C, prevent the destruction of or significant changes to those wetland areas, related water bodies, sorry, and adjoining land that provides flood protection. Paragraph D, protect wetland systems that provide filtration of water flowing into ponds and streams, augment stream flow during dry periods, and which connect to the ground or surface water supply. Paragraph E, protect wildlife habitats, maintain ecological function and support and support other public purposes as those cited in New Hampshire RSA 482-A:1 and as amended from time to time. Protect potential water supplies in existing aquifers, parentheses, water-bearing stratum and aquifer recharge areas. Prevent," Paragraph G, prevent unnecessary or excessive expense to the town for the purpose of providing and/or maintaining essential services and utilities that might be required as a result of development in the wetlands. Paragraph H, prevent damage to structures and properties caused by inappropriate development in wetlands. Paragraph I, require the use of best management practices and low-impact development in and adjacent to Wetlands Conservation District areas. The next paragraph, 22, all of those B through I uses, those are very similar to what's in our ordinance. Nothing, no significant changes there. 220, sorry, 220.18.2, applicability. All proposed development, removal of vegetation or alterations slash disturbance of land, including but not limited to drainage, wastewater disposal system, wells, and other utilities within the Wetlands Conservation District is subject to the requirements of Article IV, Section 220.18.
Hey, Tim?
Yeah?
Just a clarification. Currently, we have this thing called prime wetlands. Is the prime wetlands equal to this Wetlands Conservation District?
Um, no.
No?
It's.
So it's not, do we still, will we still have a prime wetlands type designation?
Well, we'll see later on that there are.
Okay.
There are kind of placeholders for prime wetlands.
Yeah.
But the plan was to also have corresponding prime wetlands ordinance ready for this year.
Right.
But with the COVID thing, the studies didn't get completed until October.
That's not included.
And it's quite an extensive.
This new zoning ordinance won't have any impact on that.
That's true.
All right, thank you.
But if the prime wetlands do get followed through and voted at maybe a 2022 town meeting, then we wouldn't have to modify this because the.
Because I wanted to make sure that, you know, we could move forward with that prime wetlands. I think that's very, very important for the town personally.
Yeah, yeah, no, it is.
So this has no impact on that? Okay. You go on.
So next, Section 220.18.3, Boundaries and Setbacks. Wetlands Conservation District includes, A, surface waters of the state, B, wetlands of any size, including but not limited to swamps, bogs, marshes, ponds, lakes, and vernal pools, C, inland streams that meet the definition of New Hampshire DES Environment Water Regulations 103.21, parentheses, intermittent stream, and Environment Water Rule 103.53, perennial stream. Note, additional restrictions and setbacks apply if within the Plastow Shoreland Protection District, which is defined in our current Section 220-27. And that will remain unchanged. Paragraph D, man-made drainage structures, including but not limited to detention ponds, retention ponds, and drainage swales, shall not be considered part of Wetlands Conservation District. Paragraph E, a wetland buffer area comprised of all land parallel to and measured from the edge of the wetland boundary on a horizontal plane to a width defined below. And there's a table titled Wetland Buffers and Setbacks. Everything is measured in feet. And there you'll see prime wetland in a limited use buffer, which we haven't really talked about yet, but we will get to in a minute. 100 feet parking and structure buffer, 125 feet, water system setback, 125 feet. Vernal pools, 75 feet, which is consistent with our current ordinance. Parking and structure buffer, 100 feet, which increases the protection for vernal pools. And wastewater system setback at 100 feet, again, is consistent with our current ordinance. Then the proposal is to define wetlands greater than 3,000 square feet in the limited use buffer 50 feet away, in our parking and structure buffer 75 feet, and water system setback 75 feet. Then for inland streams, including intermittent streams, in the limited use buffer 25 feet, parking and structure buffer 75, water system setback 75.
And Tim, quick question here. Are these more or less restricted than currently?
Um, yes.
Yes?
Some are. Most, I would say, well, they'll take the vernal pool one. That's easy. Our current restriction would be 75 feet. So in the limited use buffer, it's 75. In the parking and structure buffer is 25 feet larger.
Yeah.
So there's more protection there.
Right.
In the wastewater system setback, 100 feet, that's consistent with what we have as well. Now, our current wetlands define wetlands from poorly drained soils as having different buffer widths from very poorly, 50 for poorly, 75 feet for very poorly. So this is defining a limited use buffer that's reduced to 50 feet.
Right.
And the parking and structure is 75 feet, which is consistent with our current buffer of 75 feet for very poorly drained.
Can we get through reading it first before we start, keep on discussing this? Because we're never going to get done. Why don't we just finish reading it and then we can go back?
When I had the question, I just thought I'd ask it, but I'll.
No, I agree with that. It's important. It's not.
That's a lot to read. All right, keep going, Tim.
Yeah, well, I mean, we can skip over some of the gruesome details.
Can we skip over some of it?
Um.
I think you've got to read it, don't you?
Well, yeah, actually, no, we can't.
Does anybody have any objections to skipping over some of this or?
Nope.
Yeah, well, because it's a public hearing. We really have to.
No, we can't. Unfortunately, we can't do that.
Read through that. So the next paragraph, 220-18-4, Boundary Markers. Planning Board or Conservation Commission may request wetland boundaries of, or the wetland conservation district boundaries be marked with an identifiable marking system when adjacent to existing or proposed developed areas. So that's consistent. They have to flag the wetlands now. They have to flag the wetlands under the proposed ordinance. Section 220-18.5, Boundary Appeals. In the event that the building inspector, code enforcement officer, the planning board, or the Conservation Commission questions the validity of boundaries of a wetland area or on a specific parcel of land, or upon written petition of the owner or in a butter of said property to the planning board, the board may call upon the services of a certified wetland scientist to delineate wetlands in accordance with the standards and criteria specified in 220-18.6.L and 220.18.6.M in order to examine said area and report the findings to the planning board for their determination of the boundary. Expenses incurred in retaining these services shall be paid by the applicant or landowner. So again, that's consistent with what we currently have.
Tim, would you like me to do the definitions for you?
Yeah, sure.
I can do the definitions and you can take our.
Let her rip.
Okay. Section 220-18-6, Definitions. A, Buffer. The protected upperland area adjacent to all systems described within the Wetland Conservation District. This area acts as essential maintenance and protection of wetland value and function. B, Certified Wetland Scientist. A person qualified to delineate wetland boundaries and prepare wetland maps who is certified by the state of New Hampshire Board of Natural Scientists as defined by RSA 310-A:76-2-A and as amended from time to time. C, Development. Any human made change to improve or unimproved real estate, including but not limited to buildings or other structures, paving, mining, dredging, filling, grading, excavation, or drilling activities. D, Inland Stream. Environment Water Regulation 103-21. Intermittent stream means a water course that is fed by groundwater but is not in the groundwater table throughout the year, where runoff from rainwater, I'm sorry, rainfall and snow melt is the supplement source of water for flow, such that the stream typically does not have flowing water during dry portions of the year. Environment Water Rule 103-53. Perennial stream means a water course that is the groundwater table for most of the year and so has groundwater as its primary source of water for stream flow, with runoff from rainfall and snow melt as a supplemental source of water, so that it contains flowing water year-round during the atypical year. E, Groundwater. The subsurface water that occurs beneath the water table in soils and geological formations. F, Limited Use Buffer. Uses within this buffer area are restricted to permitted or conditionally permitted uses through these regulations. Any use not specifically identified as permitted or conditionally permitted is considered prohibited. G, Prime Wetland. An area designated as a prime wetland in accordance with RSA 482-A:15 in the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, Environment Water Code 700, and as amended from time to time. H, Setback. Distance from a wetland boundary within which a use is prohibited. Any zoning board of adjustment action to grant a variance for a smaller setback shall still require a conditional use permit if the proposed use is a conditional use. Conditional use permit shall not override the distance setback granted or denied by the zoning board of adjustments. I, Surface Waters of the State. Pursuant to RSA 485-A:2.XIV, which would be, I believe, 14.
14.
And as amended from time to time, perennial and seasonal lake, streams, ponds, and tidal water within the jurisdiction of the state, including all streams, lakes, or ponds bordering state marshes, water courses, and other bodies of water, natural or artificial. J, Vernal Pool. Environment Water Rule 104-44. Vernal pool means a surface water or wetland, including an area intentionally created for purposes of compensatory migration.
Compensatory.
Compensatory, thank you. Migration that provides breeding habitat for amphibians and invertebrates that have adapted to the unique environment provided by such pools and that A is not the result of ongoing anthropogenic activities that are not intended to provide compensatory mitigation, but compensatory mitigation, including but not limited to, one, gravel pit operations in a pit that has been mined at least every other year, and two, logging and agricultural operations conducted in accordance with all applicable New Hampshire statutes and rules, and B, typically has the following characteristics. One, cycles annually from flooded to dry conditions, although the hydroperiod size and shape of the pool might vary from year to year. Two, forms in a shallow depression or basin. All rules effective 12/15/19, unless otherwise noted, rules as amended through September What is the 15? Am I sure what the 15 is?
Uh.
I think that's a typo.
Yeah, I think so.
Unless it's 2015. That could be 2015.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're right. That's the year.
2015.
Okay. Three, has no permanently flowing outlet. Four, holds water for at least two continuous months following spring ice out. Five, lacks a viable fish population. And six, supports one or more primary vernal pool indicators or three or more secondary vernal pool indicators. K, Wetland. Pursuant to RSA 482-A:2.X, and as amended from time to time, an area that is inundated or saturated by surface or groundwater at a frequency and duration sufficient to support and that, under normal conditions, does support the prevalence of vegetation typically adapted for life in saturated soil conditions. They include. They include but are not limited to swamps, bogs, marshes, ponds, lakes, and all such areas as included in the jurisdictional definition of the New Hampshire Wetland Bureau Administrative Rules. L, wetland delineation and classification of jurisdictional areas. Environment Water Rule four oh six, delineation and classification of jurisdictional areas. Environmental Water Rule four oh six dash zero one, references for delineation of wetland boundaries subject to A through C and below, the individual, the individual performing the wetland delineation on behalf of the applicant shall base the delineation on the presence of hydrophobic vegetation, hydroic soils and wetland hydrology in accordance with the federal delineation method available and note, and, um, available as noted in Appendix A, Environmental Water Rule four oh six dot zero one. According to method established in Wetland Delineation Manual Technical Report Y dash eighty-seven dash one, Corp, uh, Corporation, Corps of Engineers, January nineteen eighty-seven, and regional supplement to the Corps of Engineers Wetland Delineation Manual, North Central and Northeast Region, version two point O, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, January two thousand and twelve. A, the hydrophobic vegetation component of the delineation shall be done in accordance with the North Central and Northeast two thousand sixteen Regional Wetland Plant List, version three point three, two thousand sixteen, published by the U.S. ACE and available as noted in Appendix B. B, the hydroic soil component of delineation shall be determined in accordance with the New England Hydroic Soil Technical Committee's Field Indicators for Identifying Hydroic Soils in New England, version four, two thousand seventeen, published by the New England Interstate Water Pollution Control Commission and available as noted in Appendix B. C, delineation of vernal pools shall be based on the characteristics listed in the definition of the vernal pool in Environment Water Rule one oh four. To assist in the delineation, individuals may use either of the following references. One, identifying and documenting vernal pools in New Hampshire, third edition, two thousand sixteen, published by the New Hampshire Fishing Game and available as noted in Appendix B. Or, C, the U.S. ACE Vernal Pool Assessment. And finally, M, wetland boundary delineation, Environment Water Rule four oh six dot zero two, delineation of wetland boundaries state that for projects that require a wetland delineation, wetland boundaries shall be delineated by certified wetland scientists except in the circumstances listed in RSA three ten dash A colon seventy-nine, reprinted in Appendix D, Environment Water Rule four oh six dot zero two.
Okay, Greg, I'll, I'll jump in and give you a rest. Okay, I'm going to take the next two paragraphs and then I'll turn it over to Tim for the last three and we're almost there.
Awesome.
Okay, two twenty, paragraph two twenty point eighteen point seven, permitted uses. The following uses, to the extent permitted in the underlying zoning district, shall be permitted in the wetlands conservation district as specified, provided that the proposed use will not cause increases in surface or groundwater contamination, contribute to soil erosion, or cause a degradation, degradation to the wetland. A, agriculture, including grazing, hay production, truck gardening, and silage production, provided the activity does not impact a prime wetlands buffer. B, forestry and tree farming, to include the construction of access roads for said purpose, provided the activity does not impact a prime wetlands buffer. C, wildlife habitat and management. D, recreational uses consistent with the purpose and intent of this ordinance. E, conservation area and nature trails. F, the construction of well water supplies. G, elevated uncovered decks attached to the existing structure, freestanding gazebo or garden type structures and storage sheds not exceeding one hundred and twenty square feet in size when elevated on blocks, sonotubes, or similar footing, provided they maintain a minimum ten-foot setback from the edge of the wetland. H, native non-invasive planting such as trees and shrubs. I, projects that reduce impervious surfaces while ensuring the protection of the wetland butler, buffer, not butler, through erosion and sediment control best management practices. J, projects that revegetate or revitalize in some way an already disturbed buffer zone. K, projects that are within an easement, any easement must also comply with the conditions of the easement. Paragraph two twenty point eighteen point eight, conditional use. A, conditional use permit. Under the enabling authority granted by R N H RSA six seventy-four colon twenty-one, Roman numeral two, and as amended from time to time, the following uses are only permitted in the wetlands conservation district pursuant to the issuance of a conditional use permit by the planning board. Before the planning board undertakes a conditional use review, the applicant shall make application on form provided by the planning department to the Conservation Commission for a review and comment. The application shall document the degree of temporary and permanent impact and detail how the conditions listed in paragraph two twenty point eighteen point eight, point B, are met. The planning board shall consider the comments or recommendations made by the Conservation Commission prior to acting upon a conditional use permit. Conditional use permits shall only be considered for the following uses. One, site development such as, but not limited to, construction of roads and other access ways, parking areas, utilities, structures, drainage systems, water impoundment, and other site improvements that impact the wetlands conservation district. Two, agricultural activities within the prime wetland buffer, including grazing, hay production, truck gardening, and silage production in accordance with best management practices. And three, forestry and tree farming within the prime wetland buff, buffer, I want to say butler there, but buffer when conducted consistent with the best management practices as published by the New Hampshire Department of Natural and Cultural Resources and the New Hampshire Cooperative Extension. B, conditions prior to the issuance of a conditional use permit, the planning board shall conclude and make a part of the record compliance with the following criteria. One, that the proposed use is permitted in the underlying zoning district. Two, no alternate, no alternative design that does not impact a wetland or a wetland buffer, or that has less detrimental impact on the wetland or wetland buffer is feasible. Three, a certified wetland scientist has provided an impact evaluation that includes the functions and values of the wetlands and assessment of the potential project related impacts and concluded to the extent feasible, the proposed impact is not detrimental to the value and function of the wetlands or greater hydrologic system. Four, that the design, construction, and maintenance of the proposed use will, to the extent feasible, minimize detrimental impact on the wetland or wetland buffer. Five, that the proposed use will not create a hazard to individual or public health, safety, and welfare due to the loss of wetland, contamination of groundwater, or other reasons. Six, that the applicant may propose an increase in wetland buffers elsewhere on the site that surround a wetland of equal or greater size and of, and of equal or greater functional value than the impacted wetland. Seven, in cases where the proposed use is temporary or where construction activity disturbs areas adjacent to the immediate use, the applicant has included a restoration proposal, revegetating any disturbed area within the buffer with the goal to restore the site as nearly as possible to its original grade and condition following construction. Eight, that all required permits shall be obtained from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, Water Supply, and Pollution Control Division under RSA four eighty-five dash A colon seventeen, the New Hampshire Wetlands Bureau Administrative Rules and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers under section four oh four of the Clean Water Act. And there, I'm going to take a pause and yours, Tim.
Okay, um, just another three paragraphs here, which are pretty short. Two twenty eighteen point nine, prohibited uses. In reviewing an application for variance for, from provisions of Article Four, Section two twenty point eighteen, Plastow Zoning Board of Adjustment may request Conservation Commission and/or the planning board review the application and provide written comment as to the impacts the proposed use may have on wetlands or wetland buffers. Following uses are not permitted in the wetlands conservation district, notwithstanding that they may be permitted in the underlying zoning district. A, salt storage. B, junkyards. C, solid or hazardous waste facilities. D, use of fertilizers on lawns, except for lime or wood ash. E, bulk storage or handling of chemicals, petroleum products, underground tanks, drums, above-ground tanks, hazardous materials, or toxic substances as defined under New Hampshire RSA one forty-seven dash eight two seven, and as amended from time to time. F, snow storage, unless in accordance with New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services' Snow Disposal Guidelines, Document W M B dash three dated two thousand and seven. G, sand and gravel excavations. H, processing of excavated material. I, any use not specifically listed as a permitted or conditional use. Section two twenty point eighteen point ten, non-local permits. Notwithstanding the provisions of Article Four or local approval of proposed uses, any permits required by the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, Water Supply and Pollution Control Division under RSA four eighty-five dash A colon seventeen, the New Hampshire Wetlands Council under RSA twenty-one dash oh point five dash A, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers under section four oh four of the Clean Water Act, shall be obtained prior to the use or alteration of wetlands. Separate local approval of regulated uses in wetlands shall be required irrespective of obtaining non-local permits. Twenty point eighteen point eleven, enforcement. Any wetlands in violation of Article Four, Section two twenty dash eighteen shall be restored at the expense of the violator or violators as provided by RSA four eighty-two dash A. The code enforcement officer shall be responsible for the enforcement of the provisions of this ordinance. From time to time, the code enforcement officer may call upon the resources of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services to resolve any issues regarding the nature and/or extent of the violation and to enlist their help on a suitable restoration.
Great, good job, good job. And I know, you know, the public is probably on the edge of their seats out there.
Yeah, a moment to bed.
I don't see Dean here, but I'm, I'm assuming there's no one there, so I'm just going to assume there's no one there, John. Maybe you want to take a look just to be sure.
What's that?
Whether there's anybody that's still awake out there.
I really doubt that. I really doubt that.
Francine's awake.
I, I just have one question for John, if you could answer it for me. Of all of these definitions that were read, have, have they been vetted to coincide with our MS four stormwater management system that we put into place in the town?
Tim?
I'll look for, yeah, I'll look, I, I think they're pretty much independent of anything that would be in stormwater management, but I'll, I'll look to make sure.
Did you hear that?
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Do we have anybody out there, John?
Everybody's busy doing something else.
Oh, really? There's a selfie scan right now.
Either that or just sleep. Not a bad night to get.
We put him to sleep. Okay, well, this is a very comprehensive zoning amendment, Tim, and I, I think there's a lot here and it sounds like it's strengthening, strengthening our, our ordinance.
Yeah, I, I think so. You know, one, one thing we were really lacking was reference to the, the later RSAs and environmental regulations rules. So, this ordinance kind of brings all that up to, up to date.
My only other comment is that, you know, it would be nice if we had it earlier in the process. It's, it's a little, it's a lot to absorb, but we did read all the way through it. Everybody's had an opportunity, so, but, you know, maybe in the future we could get it a little bit earlier. Anybody have comments, Lori?
Did Concom hire somebody to write this up for them, or did you do this or process with this?
Yeah, we, the Conservation Commission hired Mark West, West Environmental Services, primarily to help us institute prime wetlands or do that study and evaluation. And as a kind of an offshoot of that, we asked him to review our wetlands ordinances, aquifer protection and so forth. So, what he did was send us two, um, two different ordinance, one from Exeter, which I thought was the one that was most applicable, and a second one from Portsmouth, which had all the, kind of the rules and whatever updates. But their ordinance was really nuanced to each little stream or saltwater marsh, and they had, and a whole list of regulations that seemed to be kind of area specific. So it was, probably works very well for them, but I didn't, I didn't see how that could be sort of generalized easily for us.
Well, they're right on the ocean, so they have all that.
Right, you've got all the ocean there.
So the Exeter one really popped out pretty much. So, I took the Exeter one and kind of changed Exeter Plasto, which is this, this result.
But we're not going to be, you're not going to be taking to court for using this.
No. I'm pretty sure Exeter got theirs from the RPC.
Oh, okay.
Tim, does the planning board have any expertise that we use to help get through this? I mean, it seems pretty, pretty thorough and pretty detailed. Do, when someone's coming in for a site plan where wetlands are involved, is there a resource that we, the planning board can use?
Yeah, we have our own.
Pete.
Mr. Pete.
Oh, so he's an engineer, but?
Yeah, he reviews all these technical things. He's very, very good.
Excellent, excellent, thank you.
Yeah.
I would say the, the main, two main differences. And one is the, kind of the expanded use of conditional use permits. I mean, that's, we have that in our ordinance for a couple of, really just access. And this kind of broadens that to look for other, other uses under conditional use permit. So it kind of expands it there. And our, our current requirement is you get a report from the Conservation Commission, you hold the public hearing on the conditional use permit. Typically, that's done concurrently with the site review, the site plan review, public hearing, but it can be independent, can be a separate one. But it adds to, in order to get approval of the conditional use permit, there's a much longer list of criteria that you have to meet. And they refer back to a lot of the definitions. So, from that point of view, it's, I think, a little more thorough.
How many conditional use permits have come before the planning board? I, I don't recall one that I've been involved in.
We've had, I think probably the latest one is the storage unit off one twenty-five by Tractor Supply. They get conditional use permits to get access to the rear of their property because they cross the stream.
Oh, that's right, that's right, yeah.
And then, although we hasn't come forward recently with the North Ave subdivision that had a conditional use permit to, in the entryway, whatever the name of their road was off North Ave. So we have, you know, I wouldn't say we're inundated with them, certainly, but we, we have seen a few. And there'll be a few more.
Certainly comes in handy when we have those situations. So, is there any, yeah, John?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I mean, there's a lot of verbiage here, for sure.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of expertise.
But three of us to read it.
Yeah, yeah. To, to, yeah, there's a lot of expertise involved with any type of analysis such as this, but all of this language is, is involved with MS four anyway. And this community, this, this community is an MS four community, as are all of the southern communities. are all of the southern communities, southern New Hampshire communities. They're all part of that MS4 requirement. So any disturbance of land...
Wetlands.
Land associated with wetlands and wetland buffers, all of it, it's all required through language like this already. So by putting it in black and white and making it part of the town's ordinances, it's just... It's something that has to be done.
Yeah, it strengthens our position. Did you have a comment, Francine?
No, no, no. That was exactly the question that I was asking earlier, so I'm glad to know that that is being dealt with with our MS4 stormwater management, because we take that very seriously here, and there's been a lot of work that's been done with the town manager, private supervisor, and some of our board and committee members, but I'm glad to know that.
Yeah, I mean, it really has gotten to the point. You can't ignore it. You have to deal with it, and there's no way around it.
Right.
You know, we're all trying to protect our wetland resources and making sure that any point sources of pollution are effectively dealt with.
Right.
Because this is the last part of the Clean Water Act that was passed in 1970, is controlling point source pollution, because it's the last leg of it. It's the most complicated and probably the most costly leg of it, but, you know, it is the law, and it has to be followed.
Well, I would just make another comment that, you know, we're getting water in the town, but that doesn't mean we don't protect our resources, because, you know...
Exactly.
Those wetlands are not just for a source of water, they're for a number of different, you know, I can't even mention all the things. So I applaud this, and I'm all in favor of it. I think everybody here is, and we're glad we have it, and we could get it in this year. So do we have any more discussion, because we need to have a motion to post this to the warrant?
I just have one comment, and I experience this all the time, and I'm sure everybody else does. When you go into these shopping malls everywhere, right, this time of year, you just see the surfaces of them completely inundated with salt and sand. And, you know, that is so illegal, and it's everywhere. Anybody that's driving a salt truck and dispersing that stuff is supposed to go through a program, a Rhodes Scholar program. You're not supposed to be overdoing it as they do all the time.
Yeah.
It's like riding in the Nevada salt flats. And it's so illegal, and no one's doing anything about it, and it's rampant.
You know why?
It is.
Insurance.
Huh?
Insurance.
Liability.
Yeah, I know, but it's so ridiculous.
Yeah, they go too far on the liability side, really, I think.
Yeah.
Well, the liability is endangering the environment.
Yeah.
And all of these parking lots are point sources of pollution. They're devastating the ego.
By the fishing game, they can't use it.
Well, every time it snows or we get any snow at all, I mean, you know, the town puts salt around Town Hall, around the library, and I always notice that, I'm thinking to myself, what's that balance between safety and, you know, the environment?
Man, it just... I'm just saying, it's ridiculous. They put an inch of salt down for, you know, a little bit of ice.
Okay, so anybody want to make a motion on this one? It's the last one, so... Anyone?
Moved.
Karen, go ahead. So moved?
So moved.
So Karen moved to move this, post this to the warrant.
And I'll second it.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second? Any further discussion? If not, I'll ask for a vote. Roll call, though. The final roll call, though. No, it isn't. We have two more.
No, it's not.
We're not done yet. I know it's past nine, so go ahead.
Jim Peck.
Yes.
Timothy Moore.
Yes.
Lori Mallett.
Yes.
Karen Robinson.
Yes.
Francine Hart.
Yes.
Okay, 500. Excellent, and I do want to thank our readers, and we will have a secret poll to see who is the best reader. I know we all did a great job, so I appreciate that. It was long, and, you know, it's nine o'clock, so I think that wraps up the public hearing. So unless anybody objects, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Close it, close it.
Okay, I'm closing it.
You want to continue it to...
I'm sorry.
Yep.
I'm closing the public... Not... I'm continuing parts of it. I guess I'm closing part of it and continuing part of it. Is that correct, Tim?
Um...
Am I continuing the hearing?
Yeah, we probably should have been a little... Had a public hearing on each one, maybe, rather than a public hearing on the group, but...
We know which ones we're continuing.
Yep.
So, I mean, I guess to be safe, we could say the whole thing is continued.
The whole thing's continued, but some of them are altered.
And then next meeting...
We'll discuss.
If nothing has changed, then we'll just jump over it.
Do the whole thing.
So just to be clear, all of the public hearings this evening are continued date specific to January 20th.
January 20th.
Okay.
Yeah. However, I would put a caveat on that. We're not gonna go back to the ones that we didn't have any changes. I don't think we want to go back and read them again.
We have voted on them.
Yeah. We all agree. We know what we're gonna do.
We tortured ourselves enough.
Yeah, we can always put out a video version, we can sell them and whatever. Okay, so that ends... Then I continue the hearing, so let's move on to... We have a couple more pieces of new business, very exciting. We have a request for two bond releases. First one is 222 Plastow Road, and you have it in front of you. I'm not gonna read it. So anyway, I'll read at the bottom here. It's recommended that the bond was posted the amount of $5,000, and there will be an interest added when the account is closed. But you can read this, you've read it. It's not a lot here, so I'll entertain that draft motion to the bottom if anybody wants to make their motion.
I'll do it.
Okay, you want to read it?
I move the bond, starting there.
The bottom, the draft motion.
I move the bond being held for the amended...
Oh, wait, I read the wrong one. I read 26B, so...
Okay, you're on the second.
I make the motion on 26B. My mistake. 26B here, at the bottom.
Okay, I assume I get that one?
Switched them.
I only got one.
Only got one? Well, that's...
Where's the other one?
That's not good. I'm gonna read the draft motion to the bottom.
Yep. I move the bond being held for the amended site plan of 268 Main Street be released and returned to DAP reality... Yeah, okay, LLC and the amount closed.
The account closed.
The account closed.
Okay, motion by Karen, second please.
It's not 268.
I'll second.
Okay, Tim, Tim got that one?
It does say 26B.
It's 26...
Oh, 26B, I'm sorry.
26B.
Okay, 26B.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? There being noted, I call for a roll call, though.
Jim Peck.
Yes.
Timothy Moore.
Yes.
Lori Mallett.
Yes.
Karen Robinson.
Yes.
Francine Hart.
Yes.
Okay, 500, motion carries. Okay, we move on to the other one.
Who made the motion?
This is... Who made the motion? I'm sorry?
Who made the motion?
Karen.
Yeah, I made the motion.
Karen made the motion, and Tim, second.
Tried to.
Okay, so we move on to the bond release for 222 Plastow Road. I'm trying to picture where that is. Is that the storage place up there?
No, it's the P&amp;H Electric.
What?
It's P&amp;H Electric, we're almost at the Kingston Town Line.
Oh, yeah, it's across the road.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So you have it in front of you, it's a bond release, and there's a motion, draft motion down there, and there's actually two draft motions. There's one for a bond and one for an escrow. So have at it if somebody wants to read that motion.
So I move the bond being held for the amended site plan at 222 Plastow Road be released, the letter of credit returned to the bank, and the account closed.
Motion by Tim, second please.
Second.
Second by Karen. Any further discussion? I'll call for a roll call, roll call vote.
Jim Peck.
Yes.
Timothy Moore.
Yes.
Lori Mallett.
Yes.
Karen Robinson.
Yes.
Francine Hart.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, 500. One more, the escrow release, if you want to read that one.
Yep, I move that the balance of the... In the escrow being held for the amended site plan at 222 Plastow Road be released and returned to PH Electric slash DBH Realty of Plastow LLC, and the account closed.
Okay, motion by Tim, second please. Second by Karen. No discussion, I'm assuming. So I call for the last roll call vote of the night.
Jim Peck.
Yes.
Tim Moore.
Yes.
Lori Mallett.
Yes.
Karen Robinson.
Yes.
Francine Hart.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes, 500. With that, I don't have any communications. John, do you have any communications updates or anything?
Uh, not really, nothing. If anybody wants to hear about 125 development...
The which one?
125, the Newton.
Newton, yeah. Do you have anything going on?
What will end up happening, in all likelihood, the applicant is going to submit a plan to this board. It involves no subdivision of property in Plastow, and it's part of a lot line relocation of lots that are vastly primarily in Newton.
In fact.
So I've gone over this with our counsel, Charlie Clary. I've read through the statutes on it, and because there's no subdivision of land at all, it's relocating lot lines way far away from Plastow, within Newton and within the 165 acre parcel that the applicant owns. I told them to submit a plan, and technically, it's a subdivision plan, but it's really a minor lot line relocation. So the plan gets submitted here, the board looks at it, and the purpose of the plan is to show lot line relocations within the town of Newton, but nothing to change in Plastow, other than the one lot area, and its entirety changes in size a little bit, but that's all happening in Newton, so that this board can vote as a minor and just sign off on the plan. It's not a hearing, and it's not in a butter notice type of thing.
What's the timing of that, do you think?
They want to submit it ASAP, so once they have all of the information in and it's ready to be submitted to the board. Now, the caveat with the board, when you get the plan, you can decide whatever you want to do. You could decide that you want to have the butters notified, if that's the case. But I'm gonna put the staff report together. There's a great publication involving the New Hampshire Municipal Association on this particular subject, and it's a good read, and, you know, this is a subject that not everybody's clear on by any means. You really have to be practicing this stuff to deal with it, because it doesn't come up often, but it...
Now, do you think that would be January 20th?
If they get everything in, you know, early next week, yeah.
We don't have to rush it, you know?
No, no.
And what's the status in Newton, do you know?
Newton, they conditioned this plan, the approval, the final approval of this plan on this board reviewing the plan.
That wasn't their only condition.
No, there are other conditions, but...
Because that's pretty huge development.
Oh, yeah. Now, I've copied you on my dissertations to them. Like, you know, the problem so far, they showed a locust plan on the cover sheet, and it shows no land being involved in Plastow. It stops at the town line. Then you open up the first page, and you see that there is land in Plastow that's part of the plan, but it's not shown on the locust plan. And then there was no signature block, there was no stamps and signatures of the soil scientist, the engineer, relative to the stuff that's going on in Newton.
So you don't think we need... I mean, there are butters. The original plan, I think Tim shared with us, we had like a really preliminary, you know, thing, and it showed part of Plastow, and there were butters from Plastow.
Yeah, but all I'm saying is no activity proposed, no buildings or anything.
They won't disturb any soil or do anything?
No.
Okay.
No, that'll come later at some point, but...
Some point.
They have major obstacles, you know, they have to provide roadway access to the land in Plastow in order to subdivide or develop, so I don't...
Okay, enough on that one. Do you want to recap Proquip, or I can kind of give a stab at it? You might be better.
If you want to, I mean...
I'm choking now. Go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah.
Well, this is what I know.
Yeah, just a quick summary of what's going on.
A pleasure.
It's still being... The appeal is still being banded about in the court structure right now, relative to an appeal of the zoning determination, so that aspect of it is still in the appeal.
You're talking about the planning board. What I was gonna say is that I think people know, I think we told you that they did... The Anthony's filed a notion... A motion against the ZBA.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, but there's also the pending planning board, which has not... It's initially ruled on, but it could be ruled again. I know that Charlie did submit a motion to dismiss the ZBA.
Right.
And if they dismiss that, chances are, they're gonna dismiss the planning board.
Yeah.
So it's still in the courts, basically, what it boils down to.
And the reason, mostly because the judge that was originally handling it is no longer handling it, so a new judge has had to come in and start from pretty much scratch.
Okay. Anything else, or anybody?
Yeah, a couple things. We should send the wetlands ordinance to Charlie Clary, our attorney, for him to review. I forgot to mention that, because I don't think he's seen that language. So we could incorporate changes that he might have on the 20th. And then the other... The other concern I've had about the Newton plan is if there's any building in Plastow, some section of our ordinances says you need to have a... That has to be accessed by a Plastow road, which is clearly not in the cards for that division, for that subdivision. So I don't know the way around that, short of having Newton sign some kind of a letter that they're providing road access, utility access, because, you know, you don't want to have a fire break out in that building and have Newton Fire Department assume that we're gonna haul a truck out of Elm Street and try to find its way into Newton and fight the fire in Plastow. So...
But that's not part of this particular submission. That's gonna be in the future sometime, maybe.
So in the plan that we'll see, doesn't have any buildings at all?
No.
It's just a subdivision?
Yeah, it's a lot line relocation plan.
Okay, all right.
The only reason it's called a subdivision plan, because there's no clear reference in the RSA's. So any plan that shows lot line relocations or new lots or new road, they're all subdivision plans. There's no differentiation within the RSA's.
Yeah.
So it's a void.
So for the next meeting, John, we have, you know, finish up this.
Yeah.
Do you have any applications that might appear?
Nothing.
Now, we know...
Nothing at this point, except for that one.
Except for that one, but the other one that might be possible, I don't know about the timing, though. Tomorrow night, the ZBA is talking to... Gonna rule on the 190 Plastow Road. And if they do approve it, they could come back to us. I don't think it's gonna be in time for the 20th.
No.
We don't have... Do we have time?
No.
I guess we do have 10 days, right?
Yeah, but by the time they submitted everything, we'd miss that date.
Yeah.
And the other one that we may be dealing with in the not-too-distant future is one that the ZBA is gonna be dealing with fairly soon, the proposed development.
Which ones are?
Right across the street from the Walmart site.
Across from Walmart?
It's a vacant site right now, and it's gonna be replaced with a 5,000-square-foot retail.
I'm trying to think of where that is. Across from Walmart.
Isn't there a house there?
On Plastow Road?
Yeah, it's on Plastow Road.
Well, that would make it Rite Aid or somewhere in that vicinity.
Yeah, Rite Aid is right there on the corner.
There's a vacant lot there?
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get the specifics.
Okay, that's fine, so there may be something.
They're going before the ZBA.
Okay.
So they'll be hitting them first and then coming to us.
Okay, so the next meeting is the 20th, and we have to finish, finalize this, that's the last hearing, we continue for the warrant articles. Oh, one other thing I wanted to mention, Karen.
Yep.
Karen had talked to me about maybe changing the order of the zoning amendments. Do you still want to do that, or not?
Well, if we're gonna make everything short, no, I don't care now.
Okay, then we're good.
Yep.
She was saying originally, if it was gonna be long.
I didn't want it to be at the end, yeah, of nine.
The one that she had. So never mind, never mind, there's nothing here.
Just remember two.
At 9:20, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, and I'm sure most people know this, zoning ordinance is not deliberated on at the deliberative session.
No, they're not.
Exactly, they're not discussed at all.
When is deliberative, Francine?
So when do we get it out?
January 30th, Saturday, January 30th.
When is it?
Saturday, January 30th.
How are we gonna keep everybody apart?
That's early.
January 30th.
January 30th, okay. Be there or be square, it's gonna be at the.
Sorry, can you not hear me?
It's gonna, I couldn't, you were talking when she was talking, so I, I got bad hearing, you know. Do we, is it gonna be at the, what do they call it, the highway garage?
Calhoun Park's Garage, yes.
Okay.
That's our largest area that we can fit the most amount of people, and there's been discussion with our moderator that whoever participates remotely is not going to be able to vote with respect to the Secretary of State, so that we're still kind of in the process of working some of that out as well.
How many can fit in there, do you know?
Yeah.
I checked with Denise Harrocks, and Mark is making some physical accommodations, obviously, for that place, and she will let us know is, when the time comes after all the physical structures have been put in there. We also have remote access, Dean has been working really hard to give us remote access in the structure of that building as well. So there's gonna be, I think, about 20 people between the Budget Committee and the boards and the town manager, that we have to subtract that from some, I'm hoping between maybe 30 and 40 people would be able to participate, but I don't know that until Denise Harrocks comes and physically takes a look at the place.
We'll find that many meeting here.
And also, when would the, when does the warrant have to be, like, available before that?
We are required to post the warrant in the budget by January 25th, so the Budget Committee is required to provide their budget to the board on January 21st, so that we can post that warrant in budget. So at our Monday meeting, we're gonna try like hell to get all these warrants and budgets and encumbrances and everything voted on, so we don't have to come back for a special meeting.
Well, if we have a meeting, our next meeting on the.
20th.
20th?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we have it on the 20th, that should give Dee and Tim time to get it into the warrant for the zoning. Okay.
Yep, yep.
Cool, cool, all right, I'll adjourn the meeting at 9:23, we can go watch the Celtics, unless they're already over.